All right, welcome to the August 6th Northampton School Board. As Chair of the Northampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are: One, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Northampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting throughout this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number (646) 876-9923, or by clicking on the link, which is located on the SAU21 website. Two, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to get access to the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of SAU21 Office at www.sau21.org. Three, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, extension 103, or email r@evans@SAU21.org. Four, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member is called, state their presence, please. Also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the right-to-know law. We will now take a roll call.
Erin Stanton?
Here, family in and out.
Greg Duffy?
Present with family in and out.
Martin Tavishian?
Jermina Peterson?
Here with family.
And Tom Von Jess?
Present alone.
I have the roll call.
Okay, so we are going to start our meeting today with an agenda item around staff and presentations. Over the past year, one of the School Board's goals was to find ways to integrate what's going on in the school to the public a little bit more effectively, especially in this past year where things have been a little bit more online and in computer and Zoom calls. So we are trying to bring some of the good things that are going on at Northampton School, which there are plenty of, and tonight we have Marsha Zavas here to talk a little bit about that. And Sue, I'm sorry if I preceded any intro that you also might have had for that, so feel free to chime in if you would like.
Actually, Becca was going to give the introduction.
Oh, Becca, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Duffy.
You can find out who's going to introduce me, it's okay.
Anyone who wants to introduce Marsha, feel free.
So Marsha is not only our extraordinary art teacher, but she's also the director of our musical, and so she is here to share with us some information about our 2019, 2020, sorry, Spring Musical, The Little Mermaid, and she is right here. She'll be introducing to help with us.
Yay, all right. So the first thing I'll say before I let the kids join in is, the musical's been going on for years. I've been involved in some way for the past 20 years. It's a great thing that happens at our school, involves a ton of kids, grades six, seven, and eight. At one time, I had over 80 kids in the cast, and it's just a fun thing for everybody. And this year was a little different because we had all our rehearsals going, we had the sets being, you know, almost on the way to being built, we had practices, and then at March 13th, we had to just stop everything. We thought we were coming back in a couple of weeks, and then we kept pushing the date, maybe we can perform in June, and maybe we can perform in the summer, but didn't work out. So we were really flexible, and I was asked to see if there was something I could do as far as getting the show out to the public. So what I did is I took some of the rehearsal videos that we had, I took, so I had Zoom calls with a bunch of the cast members where they could read parts of the script, and I had some of the kids record themselves at home singing solos and whatnot. And I ended up putting the whole thing together as an iMovie, and it came out to fun. I mean, the kids, they didn't get to perform for an audience, but I think what happened was still something really fun, and people got to see it, and it was just, you know, you've got to be flexible in these times, and in the arts, that's kind of what we do. We are flexible all the time, and we're always using our imaginations and creativity to come up with something new and different and exciting. So this worked out, the kids had fun. I'd love them to talk a little bit about either what it's been like to be in plays in the past at our school, what it was like this year that it was a little bit different, if they had fun, if they learned anything, what they took away from it. And then if you want me to speak about what we might have to do this coming year, I have a couple of ideas, but we'll see what happens. You know, I'm hoping to do a full-blown spring musical in April, or May, or whenever, but if we can't do that, which I understand, who knows what's going to happen, nobody does, I have a couple of things that we could probably do to make something happen again. So I'd love to hear from any of the kids. I see you've got Teagan and Cam, who are sort of, or I see their names anyways, who are with us, and I know there's some Duffys hanging around.
I can unmute these two. There's somebody else that I'm looking for, if he could raise his hand.
Oh, Ben?
Yes.
Ben, if you're there, raise your hand.
His hand is up.
Oh, I see him now, whoops. There he is. Cameron is up there, and Ben is up there.
I think that's it. Jessie couldn't make it. Yes, we should have the five.
Okay.
And then I also, I put together a little mini-video, just six-minute, to show you little pieces of the big movie that we did. The big movie is an hour and something, and so this is just a little six-minute montage that we'll show you after, just to give you a little taste of what the movie was like. But either Ben, or Cam, or Teagan, either one of you, I'm sorry, I'm on a spinning chair. It's hard not to spin on the spinning chair. Who wants to talk first? Anything? All right, all right, Cam, go ahead.
So I wrote up a little something that I wanted to say about, like, all of the past musicals, and including this one. So hello, I'm Cameron Stanton, a past eighth grader at NHS. Looking back at middle school, the play is definitely one of the standout events that I was part of each year. As a younger student going to musicals and seeing the previews on opening night, you see it as a big kid event, and something that you would love to be a part of when you're able. When I became a sixth grader, I realized what an actual community the play is. Everyone was included, not just the actors and actresses, but the creative artists that can make incredible sets, and the people that just wanted to be a part of it, could help move sets and those curtains as well. The experience is priceless, and I wouldn't ever want to change any of it.
Hi, Saele.
Thank you.
All right, Ben, you want to say something? Okay.
Sure. For the one play that I've been part of was super fun for sixth grade. Oh, hi, I'm Ben, and I'm going into eighth grade. For the first play that I was part of, it was really fun, even though I didn't have a big role, and for this one, I got a bigger role, and I was super looking forward to it, and I understand that the thing had to get canceled because of COVID-19, but it was really disappointing, but the movie you put on was really good, Mrs. Zavas.
Thank you.
And I really was hoping to be able to be part of the play, but I wasn't able to because of COVID, but I was also hoping that I could continue my school year into eighth grade to do the play. So if we could go back to school, I would love to enjoy the play for my last year in eighth grade.
A little plug from Ben. Okay. Well, you know what, some way, I don't know how it's going to happen, Ben, but a play is going to happen in some form or fashion for your eighth grade year. You can count on that from me. And what about Teagan? Are you still, are you there?
Hi. My video isn't working.
Oh.
Sorry, I don't know.
That's okay.
My name's Teagan. There we are. I-
Oh, there she is.
And what I really liked from the play was how it was everybody, it wasn't just seventh graders, I got to know sixth graders and eighth graders. The scenes weren't just my grade, like, I got to do partner work and different scenes with the sixth graders and eighth graders. So I really liked making new friends in different grades.
Nice.
Thank you.
All right, and Duffy, boys?
I'll go.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Oliver Duffy, and I was a past eighth grader in the play production. I was very sad to hear that the play wasn't going to be, like, going on due to COVID, and I was thrilled to hear that Mrs. Zavas was pulling together, like, an online production of some sort. Out of my years doing the play, I'm going to miss meeting people and making new relationships with the cast members of the other grades. I'll be moving on and continuing the music theater department at Wannacunet like my older brothers, but most of all, I will miss my dear producer, my dear producer and art teacher, Mrs. Zavas.
Oh, thank you. I'll miss you too, Ollie.
Hello. My name is Solomon Duffy, and I am entering seventh grade. This past year would have been my first year participating in the school musical, The Little Mermaid. I was a made-up role, Chef Huey, which was- Both were comedy roles, and we had a blast. I am the youngest of four brothers, who have all been in the musicals during the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years, so I have seen all the past productions and cannot wait to be part of it myself. I was bummed when we had to cancel the live musical, but super happy that Mrs. Zavas put together an online version. I'm really looking forward to my seventh and eighth grade years and being part of the future productions. This is Solomon Duffy, standing on.
And Sully, made-up role. You were so good, I had to write something in for you. So that's an honor. The plays, Sully, he reminded me of something. The kids that come to watch the shows, they come and watch when they're, like, in kindergarten and first grade and second grade, and then they just wait and wait and wait until they can be in sixth grade to be in the show. And it's a school-wide event, it's something that's treasured at NHS, and just, it's something that everybody can enjoy. So you guys, thanks so much for speaking, and you've got to stick around because you want to watch. I put a little montage together, so hopefully that will work.
So I've got that, so I'm going to share my screen, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed that the video stream is the way it's supposed to, but many thanks to Marsha for all of her hours. And when you think of all the hours that it takes to put together a play in person, it takes even more hours to put together a video version during a pandemic. So the complete version, like she said, was over an hour long, this is the highlight reel. I'm going to share my screen, and let's hope the technology gods shine upon us.
Yes.
Thank you, Marsha. We love everything you do for our drama program. It wouldn't be the same without you. You really make it special for the kids.
Thank you. You know what, it's, when you love what you do, it comes through, I guess.
It does.
There it is.
Ready?
That might be that my favorite line in the entire play. Let's let the sea women out of the sea, walking with legs scary and strange. The girl is mad, as red as a- Nope, that's not my line. That looks swell. Excellent, okay. Started going like this. I think that's what's in the background. Yes. I tried to run straight past that part. And now presenting, court composer, Hercia, Thelonious, Ignatius, Prestigious, Sebastian. See, child, that is what I am talking about. Ariel? Hello? Somebody has got to nail that girl's feelings.
Thanks, Derek. Good job, you guys. It was, it's a little slower, you know, it was a little glitchy. If you watch the whole movie, it runs a lot smoother than that, but yeah, the kids all had such a good time. It's a great group, great group of kids, and I love, I just love doing it. It's really, really fun.
Thank you, Mrs. Zavas.
Thanks, Cam. I know, I had to cut all your songs. I wanted to leave all in, all of your little pieces. I'm like, oh, I can't show the whole thing, I got to make it like five minutes, and to cut everything for five minutes was not easy. I know.
Somebody has got to nail that girl's feelings.
End with that. I don't know if anybody has questions about next year, or anything they want to ask, but thank you for actually inviting us to show what we do and what we love to do, and something that's special at Northampton School.
Tom, looks like you have a question?
I have a question, just a quick comment. So first of all, Ben, Cameron, Teagan, Oliver, and Sully, first of all, thank you for coming on. You did a great job, not only representing yourselves, but the entire cast. And as I was listening to each of you, there were a couple of things that kept coming up. Community, valuing your friends and friendship, creativity, appreciation, and resilience, and I hope you hold on to all those because they're going to be really important. And then, Mrs. Zavas, thank you for inspiring our students. You do a great job.
Thank you, thank you. They're easy to work with, they're fun to work with, and they love what I love, so hey, it doesn't get better than that.
Yeah, I echo Tom's sentiment. I think this is a great example of when life hands you lemons, make lemonade, and this was aired in, did we air it in April? It was during-
Yeah, well, it was right, I zoomed everything. Zooming took a lot longer than I thought, but I didn't finish until right after school finished, so probably beginning of June.
Yeah, so that was great. Refreshing to get some of that.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it was fun. Yeah, and so I turn over next year, if I have to work with small groups and, you know, record little small groups, or if I can do a whole show, that'd be great. I'm thinking talent show, you know, we're going to have to invent things and be creative for talent shows and all of that, but I think we can still make stuff happen. So thank you so much, and I'll just listen for the rest, maybe, and you can unvideo me.
We're with you guys 100%, and Ben and Teagan, Ollie, Sully, it looks like we're going to be making lemonade again this year, so let's look forward to mixing a new recipe and seeing what we can come up with. So congratulations.
Nice job, guys.
On Cameron, sorry, I left you out, Cameron. You're hiding in the corner of my screen. Any other questions for the kids or Marsha? All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, we'll move on to our notes, regular meeting notes from June 4. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 4.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on those? Okay, roll call vote?
Do you need a second?
Erin seconded, sorry.
Okay.
Roll call, is Erin Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Thomas Von Jess?
Yes.
And Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. Our next item is approval of the minutes from the July 15th Board Meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 15th special meeting.
Second.
Erin Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Epstein.
I have the vote recorded.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. All right, moving on, number three in the agenda is correspondence and commendations. Do we have any? Talk about-
I have-
Tonight.
I have some.
Okay.
Also, I think Tracy got bumped out, and she needs to get let back in. The first one is really commendations for our custodial and facilities staff. They've been doing an amazing job during the summer of not just cleaning, but helping us figure out all of the things that we need to figure out to make the school safe, signage, measuring, ordering items, just all kinds of things. So Stu and his crew have been doing a great job with that. The other thing I wanted to do, and I think it might lead into a commendation perhaps that Greg has, and if not, I have it, I have it as backup, but I wanted to just publicly thank Tracy for all of her five years at Northampton School. I think everyone who knows Tracy has always been impressed, and the things that impressed me, even though I've just been here for one year, I think the number one thing when you get to know Tracy is her love of children. I mean, she just loves every child in that school like nobody's business, and she knows them all, she knows their needs, she's patient, she's kind, she's organized, she has a sense of school spirit that permeates her work in the school, and she is so committed to Northampton School. So I just wanted to publicly thank Tracy and wish her the best. And Greg, do you have the other piece, or am I the only one that got that?
I have something I was planning on saying, but I don't know if it's the other piece that you're referring to.
So I was copied on a letter from James Sununu. Would you like me to read it, or do you have it?
Oh, I don't, I did not see that, so absolutely.
Okay, can I read that then, too? So James sent a letter to the School Board, and it says, "Dear Northampton School Board, I'm writing to express my gratitude to Tracy Griffin-Hagan for her service to Northampton School over the last five years. As a board member, I have seen firsthand how her dedication to her work has made Northampton a better, stronger school, especially for those students who have special needs. Over the years, I've spoken with dozens of parents of students with special needs, and every last one of them consistently praised Tracy's work and the support she gave their children. And as a parent of three former NHS students, I have seen how much she cares about each and every student in the building, and takes a personal interest in seeing that every child receives as much support in their education and growth as our school can provide. During my time on the Board, Northampton faced significant turmoil and many challenges, and Tracy persevered through it all with her dedication to the kids always first and foremost. Change is never easy, and it can be slow to come, but I believe Northampton School has changed for the better in recent years, and Tracy is a big part of that success. She has my utmost respect and admiration, and I wish her all the best in the future. She will be missed. Sincerely, James Sununu."
Thanks, that was, wow.
It's just, see, he sent it at 5:25, so I'm going to have to checkize him because I was doing some prep work, but I have a few comments myself. Terribly saddened to see Tracy go, but I know that it's a decision that she made for herself and her family first, and we've always talked about family first and doing what's right for yourself. And we wish you all the best, Tracy. This is definitely a little bittersweet. You know, as James alluded to, I've known Tracy for six or seven years since she started, was part of the interview committee for her, and I- And I, I'll be honest, I think it took me maybe 20 seconds into her conversation with the committee to want to hire her. And I marched right out of there right away and said, we have to get this person. And she entered the school with focus, she, with dedication. And there's been, as I think a lot of people are aware, it's been a little bit of a tumultuous tenure through the last six years. We've been through some superintendents, some assistant superintendents, we've been through some principals. One of the consistent things has been Tracy, who has and did, and I think it's important to let the community know, and I'm glad there's 109 people on here this time. She stood like a rock and never wavered and never put anybody first except for the kids. And it was not an easy task. There were some very trying times during that. I've never saw her act out of character. She was, she is and was professional at every moment through some very difficult times. And I think it's a testament to, to her character. And losing that character is a tough, is a tough pill to swallow. But I wish you the best, and we'll look for another character to fill.
Thank you.
I just want to add one thing that everybody maybe doesn't know at home or even on the board, but Tracy also has a great sense of humor. So, you know, we'll laugh when, when it's hard to laugh sometimes. So that's thanks to her sense of humor. She's got a funny way of word, with words sometimes.
That was a very diplomatic way of saying that, and my parents will appreciate you saying it in just that way.
Your alter ego, Jagi, right?
Baby. Hi, Ashton. How are you? It's nice to see you.
I'll miss you, Mrs. Griffin-Hagan.
I'll miss you too, Ashton. Thanks, Aaron.
You thought this was the last time you could say goodbye. And you've had a real impact on his education. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, Northampton is an amazing community. And, you know, I think it is very hard to leave. But I, I know you have an incredible administrative team there with Susan and Becca. And you have an incredible staff. I can't imagine working with a more skilled and expertise special education staff. They are phenomenal. I would argue they are the best, you know, in the Seacoast. And they are complemented by an extraordinary educational associate team as well. We are very fortunate, you all are very fortunate to have that team. And it, they will carry on with the same level of expertise and passion, whether I'm there or somebody else is there, because that's what they do. And they've been, it's been an amazing staff to work with. I said at the last parade, I wouldn't have wanted to go through this situation with any other staff. And, and as I've said to the staff, we've come a long way in five years. And that is the hard work and dedication of the board. And certainly our teachers are, are, the entire staff, quite frankly, from our facilities to Paula's team, to, uh, to, to the teachers and EAs. So, thank you. It's been a real privilege to work in Northampton.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, anyone wanna add anything else?
I've got one more commendation, if you don't mind. I'd like to say, over the course of the summer, there's been a lot of extra work done by the task force, the back-to-school task force, administration, teachers. And I just want to say thank you for all your work, the extra effort, energy, and focus. Sometimes it's frustrating, but although it be frustrating at times, it doesn't mean you're not appreciated and your work's not appreciated, so thank you.
All right, if we're talking now, if we move into the next, then the item which is public. Comment, questions, and votes. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to just do a couple of things. I noticed a large attendance here, and I suspect that there's some commentary tonight. So I just wanted to outline kind of the policy around this. As a board, we, you not here?
You're very, very muffled.
How's that? Is that any better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry, I'll talk louder too. So we've been, I just want to outline a couple of parameters around public participation in board meetings. A former board meeting once told me, it's very peculiar, this is a, this is not a public meeting, this is a meeting held in public. And so there is a designated time for comments from the audience. And, and there's also sort of a, not an interaction typically between the school board and the audience, because it really is a meeting held in public. So there's that moment for, for, for comments. As a board, we've always operated freely and a little bit more openly. That's one of the things that we strive to do, in that we have entertained commentary from the public throughout. And I think we want to continue to do that in the future. However, tonight, I think it's probably pertinent, given the amount of people and the topic, that we sort of fall back on our policy and set aside the time to hear commentary from the public. It probably won't be engagement from the board to the public. I would also ask that people allot some time for others to speak. And the policy states 15 minutes in total, but there may be more than that. I'll ask the board if they're in agreement to making sure everybody gets their, their time on the microphone, even if it goes over the 15 minutes. So I'll ask that of the board right now. If they're in agreement, they can just verbally say so.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay. And then, I think that should about cover it. So I'll just ask that, how we're gonna work this is, you, I think there's a button that you can raise a hand or notify Rhonda, and Rhonda will, will take, take you and put you on speaker. And as typical in these meetings, you'll, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, your address. And the other thing I would ask of the board to approve right now is that typically it's, it's town residents in a, in a town public meeting that get the opportunity to speak. We would like to open it up to, I would like to make a proposal that we open it up to, to anyone who, who has a topic regarding the school or has a relationship with the school. There may be parents that live outside of this town that have a relationship with the school. So as long as we maintain that, then I would be willing to hear what anyone had to say. If the board is in agreement with that, we can just state.
Agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't see why, sure.
Okay, so I think at this point, we'll open it up to the public for comments. And if you have one, electronically raise your hand, and Rhonda will let you in.
I do have Anna Spalding had her hand raised.
The good kindergarten teacher got her hand up first.
That's right.
Hi, Anna.
Hi, how are you guys? Thank you so much. I want to read an email that my husband and I drafted this morning. So I want to voice my opinion on this reopening plans. I think we can all agree that we all want the kids and teachers back in school, if it is safe and prudent to do that. I think the plan that you, that has been laid out so far is thoughtful, and I support it. We should make a decision as soon as possible so that parents, teachers, and kids can begin to plan for the fall. We cannot please all stakeholders, and now it's decision time. Let's make it and let's go. People need to plan accordingly. Whether it's pre-K to five in person or six to eight in person, it's debatable. To me, the topic is sound enough, reduce the school population on any given day, spread out, et cetera. Middle school teachers can be centralized on-site for optimized resources and most effective delivery of e-learning, and also sharing of best practices. They have very little time to optimize at this point, so initial delivery could be rougher than if they had more time to plan. Pre-K to five, starting off in person makes sense. These kids have a smaller basis for mental toughness, socialization, immunity to germs, and receptiveness to e-learning. Get them started in person. Middle school kids can legally be left alone, providing more flexibility. Kids with specific, specific needs can be brought in for in-person, small-group support. It makes sense. My kids are going into sixth and eighth grade. They would rather be in school with their friends. But they have been raised with the capacity for mental toughness and ability to cope with disappointment or even uncertainty. They'll adjust, and to me, it's good for them in the long run. We, as parents, can give them alternative ways to socialize and grow as people. As for in-person learning, beware. There are business stories I've heard from people in town where in-person group trainings for new employees have severely disrupted, extended, ineffective, expensive, because someone in a pod had a cough, a fever, actual COVID, and the entire pod must quarantine for 14 days. This could render in-person learning actually the complete opposite, worse than e-learning if kids and parents are suddenly forced to pivot. That is a real downside for going full person or even partial as much as we want. Teachers want to teach, and they just want to be safe and feel supported and informed of the decision. They also need a plan for the most successful outcomes of whatever format they are asked to take on. They should also not be responsible for kids who are not respecting, respecting commonly-held best practices for avoiding the spread of COVID. In other lines of work, like retail or barber, you follow the rules if you need to leave, or you need to leave, excuse me. Teachers don't have that ability in this case. They actually have real liability in these matters with very little control. I support you, and I've done a thoughtful, and you've done a thoughtful job collecting stakeholders' opinions and data. We're ready to live with the decision and also support our community and listen openly for those with different opinions with respect. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Anna.
We have someone by the name of Eric Browning.
Hi, Eric. I think you're on mute.
I think I muted. Hi, how are you tonight? Thank you very much. My name's Eric Browning. I live at Five Bolters Cove in Northampton. I'd like to comment on the return to school plan. I think first, I'd like to commend the committee on the thoroughness and thoughtfulness that you went through to create this plan, and, and like to state upfront that I do support it. I, like all of you, would like my child to be back in school. I think before listening to the presentation last night, I really didn't fully appreciate all the potential challenges that we would face with reopening, in particular those that faculty and staff are gonna be presented with. We do have four kids, and they actually all attend different schools. And so I've actually seen a lot of different reopening plans. And I'll just say that this was by far the most well-thought-out plan, with exceptional communication from the committee, from, you know, really from the time of, of, of the spring all the way through the summer to where we are now. And really appreciate the, the explanation, the rationale behind these decisions and the specific challenges you're faced with. I think I'll just also comment that the schools that, that, the other schools that I've seen in which we are a part of, they have also created detailed plans. They've carefully considered in-person safety protocols. They're all going, planning on being in person. They have plans and scenarios by which they would transition to remote. However, none of them, and I would also include, the plan as presented here has really figured out an appropriate way to manage their quarantine requirements. As already outlined by the SU 21 school board, people are going to stay at home at times and perhaps for some kind of extended quarantine period. It could be teachers, faculty, or students. You know, and if a teacher is out, who's gonna cover the class? What if there were a lot of teachers that are out? Who's gonna cover that class? And I'm, I'm personally not comfortable, how do we ensure continuity of education in that period? 65% of the faculty and staff had some concern about not coming back. And that's, I think, a very large number that, that cannot be ignored on this, regardless of what we would like it to be. And so for any student that, you know, may have to be sent home, even if it's just a normal cold, they may, this, in this scenario, have to enter into quarantine. And how will they stay current in that? That could be incredibly destructive. As I mentioned, no of the schools I'm involved with have actually been able to answer this question. And essentially, what they're all saying is that materials are gonna be made available, and the student needs to do their best to teach themselves, which is really a much worse situation, in my opinion, than where we were in the spring, when we went into this emergency mode, where, where, where people were at home. I think we all want our kids back in school. I certainly do. But it isn't practical. I think the wide-ranging symptoms dictate that many teachers and students are going to have to frequently quarantine, and that's the unfortunate reality of this difficult situation. So I would just urge that the board accept the proposals presented to allow the Northampton team to spend this last month getting ready to open on time and provide that quality education they've done. So, thank you.
Hey, Eric.
I'm sorry, we have Andy Wallace. I'm gonna allow to talk.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Andrew Wallace. I technically live in South Portland, but as the president of Seacoast Education Association, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you for your work on behalf of students and teachers in SU 21 in these difficult times. I'm here tonight to represent the thoughts and concerns of teachers regarding the upcoming 2021 school year. The first point I do want to address is one that often gets overshadowed in all this, and that is how much we teachers missed in-person teaching and learning and connecting with our students this past spring. As teachers, this profession is our passion. It's fun, it's rewarding, it's difficult, and it's, it's very inspiring. For so many reasons, we can't wait to get back to our classes and students, which brings me to a very different point. The health and safety of our students, their families, this community, and of course, our fellow teachers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our nurses, and our paraprofessionals. Simply put, we are concerned about everybody's safety in the midst of an ongoing pandemic, and especially when we're considering putting several hundred to 1,000 people together in school buildings. This isn't a theoretical conversation anymore. COVID is already in our schools in New Hampshire. Only a few days ago, Barrington reported a case of COVID-19 in their schools. Recent numbers in Massachusetts reveal upwards of 300 new COVID-19 cases each day on average, and their rate of transmission is now up to 1.06, which indicates that the virus is spreading again. New Hampshire's rate is also increasing. And as of a week ago, Florida had reported that more than 31,000 children ages 17 and under have had the coronavirus, and 303 of them have been hospitalized. In that state, over the past few weeks, pediatric hospitalizations are up 23%, and over 8,000 children have recently tested positive. The percentage of children infected in Florida is still over 10%, and five children have died. In addition to getting the virus, children can sped the virus, as recent studies indicate that children as young as 10 can infect others in the same capacity that adults can. With all this in mind, the recent increase in COVID-19 cases means that Rockingham County needs to think differently about health and safety. And we are. We're meeting safely today on Zoom rather than meeting in person. It's a state of emergency after all. It's our job together to protect the lives and well-being of Northampton students, employees, and this, and this community. Those employees, again, the teachers, the nurses, the paraprofessionals, counselors, janitors, everyone, they need your consideration, and they need your support in a politicized atmosphere where despite the debate, 160,000 Americans in this country have died. Everyone involved in education needs a safe environment in schools, if that's possible, and support for learning outside of schools when it isn't. As you've agreed, the availability and consistent use of masks and PPE are central in this endeavor. It must also be said that SU 21 employees' concerns aren't usually matters of choice in this situation. Many have serious health issues that require changes to their working environment so they can be successful. Or they have children who attend other schools of different schedules. Or they have family members with serious health conditions. There are a variety of reasons why they may not be returning to their classrooms, but they all want to continue their practice and achieve the success that they have accomplished in the past. Remember, SU 21 schools boast some of the best numbers in the state and are consistently ranked in the top 10 list in New Hampshire. However, according to our most recent survey, 83% of 268 Seacoast Education Association teachers and staff, the majority of whom do not have a medical condition, have stated that they're very concerned about their health and their family's health. But they are all trying to make adjustments so they can teach, and we can all be successful. These concerns about health are the same reasons that up to 33% of SU 21 parents are keeping their children home in the fall too. When you folks make a decision as a board, let the health and safety of our students and staff continue to be your top priority in both word and deed. We teachers and staff are looking forward to working with the students of SU 21 again and sharing in those great times we missed so much. And in the safest environment possible in the and in the safest environment possible in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Any additional, Rhonda? I think you're on mute.
I don't see anybody else with their hands raised right now. Okay. I have another one. This looks like Steve and Jocelyn and Jacks. I don't know which one it is or if it's both of them.
Hi, it's both of us, but I'll be speaking. I want to express my concern with the proposed school plan. I know I'm not alone, because I have talked to a lot of people in this past 24 hours. This plan of virtual learning for the middle school, it shouldn't be passed. Not only was this plan of virtual learning, it wasn't discussed. It wasn't even an option for us. It seems like the results of the study weren't even considered as its decision. You said it was 66% in favor of going back to school, but I'm pretty sure it was close to 75% when I looked at it. I have a sixth grader. I'm going to have a sixth grader, a third grader, and a first grader. So two of my kids are going to go to school. One's going to stay home alone while both myself and my wife work. That's not going to work out financially for, I'm sure, for several parents out there. This plan is out of scope. You need to rethink this of the common folk of Northampton, Hampton, Hampton Falls, Southampton. You really, really need to rethink this. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
We do have somebody else. Claudia White.
Yes, I agree with Steve also. I'm feeling really disappointed that my kids are not going to have the opportunity to go to school. I feel just really blindsided. We were given the opportunity for a survey to say, you know, what do you want to do? Do you want your kids to go to school? Do you want them to stay home? You know, do you want online learning? Do you want hybrid? And I just feel that this was not an option. And everything's just happening so fast, and I don't like it. I'm just feeling really blindsided, and it's really upsetting that this was not even an option for parents and for kids. Parents are going to drop their kids off at school with one child in the car and another child out. Just this just doesn't feel right to me. And I don't know how this came up without any parents even being involved. I just, I'm not one to speak up. I tend to be better at writing and explaining myself in a different manner. And I feel like I speak for others as well. And I'm just really disappointed.
Sup, Claudia? We do have another person, Elizabeth Needham.
Thank you, Claudia.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Needham. I live at 15 Hampshire Drive. I have two students, fifth grade and seventh grade. I'm a teacher as well, not in this district, but I can see both the teacher and the parent side of this. And the thought of going back 100% isn't really thrilling to me as a teacher, so I understand the teacher's side of it. But remote 100% I don't see as beneficial at all for my own children. If there was just some middle ground where all of the students get to be in school, even if it's not every single day or every single week, for that face-to-face contact with their teachers, which is so important, so that when they get home to do their remote learning, they still have that connection, and they know, oh, well, in two days, I'm going to get to go back and I'm going to get to see my teacher again, or I'm going to get to go ask the questions I need to. I just think all or nothing aren't good options. It's got to be somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I see. We now have Tamara Sullivan.
Hi, guys. This is Tamara and Jake Sullivan. We're at 84 North Road, and we have an eighth grader coming up and then a Winnetkin freshman coming up. And Jake and I were just talking, and we're just wondering, has an actual decision been made? Like, I know we're assuming what we think is happening, but are things set? Or I guess we're just curious, like, are we getting upset about things that we don't even know are concrete yet?
Tamara, just to interject real quick. There was a joint school board meeting last night with a proposal for all the districts on what their back-to-school might look like. That was what was on the table last night, and it was voted at the joint school board to bring that to the district level because the joint board was uncomfortable voting on districts that they weren't responsible for.
Right. We're still not at a decision, though, right? Like, we're still talking about...
To answer your question, the decision has not been made. There's a proposal, and that's what we will be discussing tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just was a little confused.
If I could jump in here, this is Jake talking now. You can tell the voice is slightly deeper than my wife's. I would never ask an educator to go into a situation that was dangerous in any... Obviously, there's no control there. We can't say, yes, it's safe. That being said, shouldn't we be focusing more on making the online side of this thing more robust so that there's more content that can be delivered better outside classrooms so kids can actually get FaceTime or something like that if they do need one-on-one with teachers? Like, as much as I want to talk about how, you know, we all want our kids in school, yes, but there's no way we can guarantee everyone's safety. Can't we focus on something that we can control and look at what we can do right now?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I have Amy Hyatt.
Hi, everyone. This is Amy Hyatt. I live at 22 Shiprock Road. I sent an email earlier today to the school board and Dr. Lupini and Mrs. Snyder, and so you all sort of saw my thoughts already. But I just wanted to just suggest that the board and the administration use some creativity in thinking about the fall. I feel like we've been given some all-or-nothing choices. First, it was, you know, do you want your kids to be in school full-time? Or do you want them to be home full-time? And then all of a sudden, we heard that several grades will be most likely remote full-time. And I just feel like there is some in-between that would be thoughtful and logical. For example, using the outdoors in September and October, having classrooms, having classes meet outside where it is very safe, having kids meet in small groups in the building, having a hybrid situation. I feel like we can use creativity to make the situation we have a little bit better. I also want to really, really recommend that we improve the online learning if we're in an online learning situation for the middle school for the fall. And I would really strongly suggest that we use synchronous learning. I thought it was really interesting that there was a distinction noted that when a Kunit was going to be using synchronous learning and that our middle schoolers were not. I see Dr. Lupini shaking his head, so maybe that means that it was misstated in that slide. It looked like there was something in the newspaper somewhere where it said that there was synchronous learning for Winnetkin, and that it wasn't going to be that way for Northampton. So I guess I understand the situation, and I hope that we can harness weather and outdoors and improve the online learning so that our kids can meet with teachers in person as much as possible. Thank you.
Do you want to take a moment to just clarify that misunderstanding?
Sure. And again, what I would do is recommend that people watch the video of the presentation last night and look at the plan, because as an example, I believe that nearly every element that Amy just talked about is actually in the plan and was addressed in the presentation. We did talk about using outdoor spaces. We did talk about five-day-a-week synchronous learning at all places where remote learning in any way is put into place. We gave examples of schedules of how that would occur. And we talked about this as an enhanced model, meaning that there would be opportunities for small groups of kids to actually come into the building to meet with teachers, not only at the high school level, but at the middle level. And quite frankly, in some places where we may end up with this kind of approach at the elementary level. So Amy, when I read your email this morning, my first thought was those things were actually all included in our plan. Thank you.
Rhonda, any additional comments?
There was another hand raised, but I don't... I see it now. Hang on. The name is Sean. Sean, can you at least provide a last name? Sean, we have you in here, but you're muted, and you need to provide a last name for us and your address. Sean, are you there?
Sean, it looks like your mute is off, but we still can't hear you.
Listen. Should I just bump him back out as an attendee? Or Sean, we can't hear... I don't know if you're speaking, but we can't hear you.
Yeah. Is there a way to open up a written dialogue for Sean to input his communication to us?
We would have to open up the Q and A.
Sean's a panelist now, so he should be able to chat.
Sean, can you type something into the chat feature? I don't see anything in...
I don't. So Sean, maybe you can hear us and we can't hear you. We're going to bump you out and give a few minutes. Perhaps there's somebody else that we'll go for, and maybe you could either log back in or try a little reboot on your side. But we'll give you a few minutes to do that. And hopefully, we have another question or a comment.
I have somebody named Sandy. And again, Sandy, if you could provide a last name for us and your address, because we only see the first name.
Hi, everybody. Yes, I'm Sandra Queenen at 222 Atlantic Avenue. And I just wanted to first thank all of you, because this is not an easy thing. So I know tensions are high, emotions are hot, but that just is an indication of how much we love our kids. So thank you, guys, all for everything that you're doing. I know you're on the hot seat here. You mentioned that I didn't go to it last night. I wasn't able to watch it. Is there a link? Or, Bill, you mentioned there is a way that we can watch the recording of it. That would be really helpful, I think, for a lot of us.
Yes. Sorry.
Oh, no, no. Go ahead.
Sorry. The video is posted on our SAU 21 website. It's right at the top of the page. And if you just want to go through the presentation, the presentation is there as well. But the video actually includes our narration of that presentation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And then, again, I'm not going to take one side or the other as far as whether we should be inside or at home. We all have our own opinions on that. But I do feel real strongly that we need to button this up and make sure that the virtual and online component of this is tight as quickly as possible, because our teachers need time to prepare one way or the other. I am concerned that a lot of the things they're saying, like if you have a fever, all that kind of stuff, you have to quarantine, you have to stay home. Well, we're going to hit flu season, right? And those are all the same sort of indications. So if we have kids in school, and next thing we know, we have to keep them out for five days and then coming back, I don't want their education disrupted, because it was disruptive last spring. So as much as we can align the in-school and out-of-school, whatever we do, I think that's super important, that we need to make sure this virtual learning side is a lot better than it was in the spring. And that's not a slight against teachers, because it was mayhem. I'm just saying, we've had all summer now. We don't have any excuses.
Thank you, Sandy.
It looks like we do have Sean back. Let's try this again. Maybe. Sean, are you there? I don't know. Maybe he just has a bad connection. I don't know.
Did you put him in panelist? I don't even see him on the panel.
No, I made him allowed to talk, and when you do that, that brings them over, and then he disappeared. So that's how I've been doing everybody. I've been giving them permission to talk, and that's when they show up on the screen.
Okay, let's move on then. Do we have any additional?
I don't see any.
Last chance. Go once.
Oh, we've got a couple. I have Ashley Haas.
Okay. Hi, Ashley.
I'm on my wife's Zoom account. This is Haas. Hey, Greg. At 22 Woodnold Drive. Just wanted to say a few comments. First of all, it's been apparent to me that the district and the superintendent have done... It's their goal to get all the kids back in school. And I'm 100% confident that if that was even a remote possibility, it would happen. So the plan laid forth has my support. And I urge everybody to not think of their independent situations, but the community as a whole. And yeah, so I support the plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Wendy Wallace.
Hello? Sorry, can you hear me? Hi, sorry. I'm terrible at this. I wasn't planning to speak. I just, I don't know...
Excuse me. Sorry. If you don't mind stating your address.
Oh, so sorry. Wendy, yep, it's 74 Exeter Road. And I should also mention I work at the school as an educational associate. And I don't know if this is going to come across as more of a question than a comment, but just in hearing when we keep talking about the enriched virtual... We keep saying middle school, middle school. And I'm just wondering when fifth grade became middle school, because I understand a little bit more when we're talking about sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and their ability to be a bit more independent. And I'm just not sure, from people I've talked to today, how we feel about that possibility with fifth graders. And this particular fifth-grade class is only about 30 kids, I believe. And it was just unclear as to why they weren't included in more of the elementary plan and have now been put with the middle school plan. Again, that's probably more of a question than a comment. I apologize.
No, thank you. We'll be getting to a lot of these questions in our regular discussion after this. So thank you for the comment.
I don't see any more right now.
Okay, with that, I think I'm going to move on. Hopefully, everybody got to speak up. Our email addresses are public as well. If you have any additional comments, please feel free. So the next item on the agenda is... My screen's there. School council update. Susan?
Hi. So we shared information about the progress report from last year's school improvement plan back in June, and we submitted the new school improvement plan to the board. And I, and I believe we'll be rescheduling a board retreat to, to, to go over that in a little bit more detail. But essentially the, the update I would have for, for leadership council is that our, our plan and our hope is to have some direction and approval of a structure for return to school so that then we can pull together the leadership council as a guiding board to help us make some of the nuts and bolts recommendations that I think will be forthcoming and to help get some of the, the actual planning that people are speaking of now that needs to happen between now and when, when instruction actually begins. So we do plan to loop our leadership council into some of those discussions. We have a tentative meeting scheduled for next Friday, August 14.
Any additional questions for Susan? Okay. Moving on. Plan for continuing business, item six, plans for return to school.
So what I guess what I'll say to start us off is, is, is this, we had a pretty robust conversation at our meeting tonight about something that didn't get mentioned in the questions. And that is that at whatever grade levels are back in school, we continue to offer and the, and the joint board did authorize last night the recreation of a remote learning academy. We know that whether it's at Southampton or Northampton or our other schools where we're bringing students back in, in K through eight, whatever grades happen to be coming back. We know there are parents who've expressed an interest in having a remote experience for, for lots and lots of different reasons. And so that is going to be available and we're hoping to get something out about that option even next week. I guess the second comment I would want to make is really something I said a few minutes ago, and that is that I think it's, I think it's worth your time to look at the materials from last night and the presentation from last night. I want to say that Dr. Hobbs and Becca Carlson, who's here from, from your school, were really part of that team on teaching and learning and spent an awful lot of time on proposing those modifications, those enhancements to, to the remote plan. And as I said earlier, they, they now include opportunities for small groups of kids to come into the building. They include a schedule. We have samples in there. They won't end up being the final of that schedule, but they include schedules that guarantee live experiences with educators each day. And as I said, they include opportunities to come into the building in small groups to meet with teachers. There are, there are lots of enhancements to that experience that we think are the lessons learned. And Jason Saltmarsh, our director of technology at the high school, who's also a Northampton resident, was a big part of, of that experience as well. There are a lot of fact, as I said last night, there are a lot of factors that led us to this particular recommendation and our recommendations are differentiated by our schools. We think that's a strength in that we, we believe we took a look at the data at each school and data did consist of looking at those surveys, but it didn't consist of looking at those surveys alone. It consisted of looking at our, our staffing in terms of, and there's a, I think, a pretty robust discussion in the presentation of our, our staff and, and the issues that they face with, because I think if we've discovered anything over the last number of months, it's how interdependent our school districts in the southeast part of the state are. They're not independent and yet people are adopting different models that are causing issues for parents, for employees at, at a variety of districts, in all districts. And so we've tried to look, take a look at all of those through the lens of something that I think Mr. Duffy said to me early on in this, trying to get all of our students back into school every day, five days a week for a complete day. That's our goal. Right? And, and one thing I don't think we, we did well enough last night was really explain that these, whatever these, these, these present status are when they're adopted, whatever's adopted. And we would also like something adopted very soon. So because we have less than five weeks now to put whatever in place. But that's a starting point. And, and we've, we've been trying to develop a set of metrics and a timeline for working against that toward the idea of getting more people back into school. So for example, for people who start out in a remote and have that opportunity to come in in small groups to meet with teachers, our goal is to increase those numbers throughout the weeks and to take a look every other week at how we can increase those numbers of students that are actually in school with the ultimate aim of trying to make sure that, that all of our students can return when it's safe. So I really do think that presentation and the slides from last night are worth your while. And I, I hope you all have an opportunity to see them if you weren't able to join us for the meeting last night. I know that your building level people have been working on some particulars of, of implementation. And I know that Susan and Becca want to talk about some of those things. Is that right? And Tracy maybe as well, but so I'll, can I, is that okay, Greg, if I turn it to Susan now?
Yes. And so I think I would just, I would just make the comment that there, there were a lot of public comments and, and I think at this point, we're having a discussion between the the board and the administration and the SAU 21. And so I would, I appreciate the expanded explanation. We got a lot of work and probably a lot of questions that the board has. So I would just encourage us to keep it focused within this group. I know we have an audience, but this is a working session.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So can I share my screen again? We have some slides that we'd like to share with you. So I'm going to kick it off and then pass it over to Becca and to Tracy. And right about now, I wish I was Marsha Zavas, just saying.
So Susan, can I, can I ask you a question? This additional information is additional to what was presented last night and shed some clarity around some of these models?
I think what, what it really is, is it's Northampton specific factors and, and kind of some the reasoning behind why this proposal was recommended for Northampton School.
Sounds good.
It's not too long. We'll, we'll be, we'll leave time for talking.
We're here all night. I cleared my schedule. We're here all night. Please take your, all kidding aside, take your time and let's, um, get thorough, thorough process.
Okay. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity for, to, for us to explain some of our thinking behind the plan for Northampton School. We really appreciate the time and the attention to our school specifically. When we, when we started thinking about exactly how to present this, we wanted to come back to the guiding values that were, that were used in planning and that the return to school task force use. And many of us were part of that return to school task force. So those four areas were safety, equity, wellness and teaching and learning. And so we looked at some of the Northampton specific opportunities and challenges through the lens of those four guiding values. And then we also wanted to make sure to just mention our school values and our new acronym, PRIDE, and just bring it back to the fact that this is a scenario with a pandemic that's unprecedented and it's required perseverance on the part of our students, on the part of our faculty, on the part of our administration and the school board. We view our responsibility to provide safe and equitable education for our students. We take it very seriously. We want to pay close attention to the integrity of the models that we're proposing. It's our sincere desire to do the right thing for Northampton School. And we have nothing but empathy for our students, our families, our staff, our teachers and the board members who, you know, you guys are teachers of your students at home this spring, your parents, and, and now you're charged with making decisions for the greater good of the whole district. So we appreciate the position that everyone is in. And please believe that we take none of this lightly. We've, we've really thought things through as much as we possibly could. We wanted to highlight the, the fact that the proposal is for the start of the school year and it's our sincere hope that we're able to shift into some other models. But in, in making the proposal, we wanted to have the ability to be flexible so that we could transition between in-person, remote or a hybrid model, depending on the circumstances. We may start in person with some kids need to shift if, if health conditions get worse. So and we might be able to shift the other way if things get better. So we, we want to make sure that we have the ability to be flexible. We understand that we need to further define the criteria for adjusting the model and we'll take that advice from the SAU and from the medical professionals who are consulting with SAU 21. In making these recommendations, we took into consideration the kind of, the kind of intersection of class size, numbers of students in each grade level, space within our school and the ability to staff appropriately. And again, as I said, we paid attention to the guiding values of safety, equity, wellness and teaching and learning with the ultimate goal for all students to return to school in person. So the structure, as you know, and for, for folks who maybe didn't get to attend last night's joint board meeting, the, the the structure that was proposed at the joint board meeting for Northampton School was, and I just wrote trimester one here. But honestly, that would be dependent, it doesn't necessarily have to mean the entire trimester. It's just, this is how we would start. And then it depends on, on other criteria that we identify. But the proposal was pre-K to grade four in-person instruction with restrictions, which would be the kinds of safety features that we'll need to put into place for any in-person instruction at school, or parents could choose the SAU 21 Remote Learning Academy, which to be clear, could include students or would probably include students and teachers from other schools within SAU 21. And then the option for grades five to eight would be the enriched virtual learning. And Becca will talk in greater detail about what that would look like and how that's hopefully different from the crisis learning that, that we provided last spring. And then hopefully trimester two and three, we're really hopeful for a return to brighter days. So the first question is, is why did we recommend pre-K to grade four in person as opposed to something different? And in the case of Northampton School, we, again, we, we took the look from the lenses of safety, equity, wellness and teaching and learning. And in terms of safety, the class sizes in our younger grades allowed for a safer return. We have smaller class sizes in our primary grades. The space that we have available is adequate. We could deliver meals to classrooms. We feel that we have the ability to design safe arrival and dismissal procedures with fewer students in the building. We really felt that if we had all of our students in the building, that arrival and dismissal would be not safe, honestly. Just, you know, it would be really impossible to, to kind of control the entry and the, the mixing if, if we're using a cohort model, which is our plan to use a cohort model where we have students in their self-contained classrooms so that we can control how many people they're exposed to. And then if there was a need for contact tracing, it would be doable. In terms of equity, one of the things I think I'd like to just point out and folks may see it differently, but from an educational lens, equity doesn't mean the same thing for everyone. It means that everyone gets what they need. And in our estimation, we felt that our youngest students needed the ability to develop the foundational academic and social skills in person. That they, if we decided to shorten the day a little bit, we could have them access unified arts content virtually. But special education services would be available within the cohort model and in person. And we would begin with technology access even in the younger grades so that our students could become familiar with the devices and the platforms should there be a need to shift to remote learning in these younger grades later on in the fall. Our commitment to wellness involves the fact that our youngest students really require movement and can access the outdoor space. We have arranged to rent three large tents with sides on them. They don't have floors, but they have side curtains to enable us to get outside a little bit more, even if the weather gets a little bit challenging. There will be procedures in place for six students and attention to social emotional learning. Again, in a revised format, because this is going to feel different because of some of the safety restrictions, the, you know, the need to have students seating six feet apart, the need to move in the hallways very carefully with students six feet apart and, and the need to spend more time within that self-contained environment. In terms of teaching and learning, again, that we found, or we believe that the foundational skill instruction is best delivered in person for our youngest students, that this would enable us to administer individual reading and math assessments so that we can address gaps in early reading and foundational math skills. And, and we do believe that although this is a little bit yet to be determined, we believe we have the appropriate staffing levels to, to make this happen. In terms of concerns that we have, we will need to serve lunch in classrooms in order to keep a safe environment. We'll need to develop a schedule for the outdoor space. We can't have everyone out there at once, even though it sounds like a great idea to use the outdoors. We still need to kind of control that so that there aren't large groups of kids in an outdoor space. That would be the, the place where kids could take masks off and, and hopefully we could use outdoor spaces for instruction and learning when the weather's good. And, and we bought the tent, we didn't buy the tents. We rented the tents for two months, for September and October. We'll need to develop those arrival and dismissal procedures and make sure that they're safe. We're going to need to utilize the additional spaces that become available within the school due to not having all the students there at the same time. We would likely pair a UA teacher with a cohort or grade to ensure that cohort integrity. So what that means is we would perhaps have the music teacher with third grade and, and if, if we use, if we, if we go with a regular school day, regular hours, then the music teacher would provide the UA class for third grade and they wouldn't have art or phys ed for a period of time because we want to keep the cohort and the integrity of the cohort. UA instruction and schedule will be impacted again. And, and we are considering a shortened day, having the UAs virtually delivered so that kids could get access to all of the UAs. We will follow all the health and safety protocols, including sending six students and teachers home. And that, you know, a challenge there could be if we have a lot of teachers sick, what, what will we do? And, and one of the big things is we all have a goal of getting our kids back in the building and seeing them face to face. But there's no question, this is going to feel different. The, the, the safety and health protocols are going to feel different. There'll be, you know, dividers in some cases, Plexiglas dividers for small group instruction. Kids will wear masks, teachers will wear masks. And all of these things are going to make it feel different and that's a reality. And then the other, just the other concern is that the staffing isn't finalized. We actually don't have all of the information that we need just yet. So those are some of the concerns we have. And then Becca will pick it up from here and talk about why we're recommending that grades five through eight be administered in an enriched virtual learning environment. Becca, take it away.
That's a quick question. I apologize to interrupt, Becca. You mentioned something I think is pretty important. You've mentioned that staffing isn't finalized because we don't have all the information you need yet. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I can.
Yeah, Bill can take that.
So for the most part, that, that, that's about the conversation that we had last evening about the, the rights that employees have under the Americans with Disabilities Act in terms of family medical leave, in terms of the COVID bill from the spring and particularly childcare issues as it relates to that bill having to do with their school age students, for example, in school, those kinds of things. Those information we, we're still gathering and, and out of HR. Those are very confidential pieces of information and discussions. You know, people, people have a right to have those conversations with HR and, and produce documentation and those kinds of things. And, and we're trying to move those along as, as we can, knowing that there are no timelines that we can actually set for those conversations. People have a right to initiate those conversations whenever. And some of them live in school districts that haven't yet decided on models. So they have their, they're waiting for information and we're waiting for them. So all of those, all of those kinds of things are what the, what your building people are referring to when they say they don't have. are referring to when they say they don't have all that information yet.
Perfect. Thanks. So, thank you, Dr. Lapini. I, I want to hear from Becca, but I do want to say that I think it's going to be important for us to come back to this part of the conversation later on because there are a lot of important factors, and, and it's not about any individual employee. But we need to talk about what the rights are and what the law is, and the impact that that has on the school overall as we, as we look forward. So, I want to come back to this in a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And so, I'd like to speak to our recommendation that we would begin our school year with fifth through eighth grade in an enriched remote learning model. This decision was obviously not arrived at easily, and I'll be using the four lenses, as Ms. Snyder did, of the return-to-school guiding values to explain our reasoning for this. First, thinking about safety. We want to reduce the risks to our students, families, and employees while ensuring that our students have access to quality learning experiences. Thinking about class size, for example. As our students mature and can work more independently, the recommended class sizes increase, and the number of adults that are supporting students within the classroom generally decreases. So, as a result of this, and our enrollment numbers, our class sizes in fifth grade through eighth grade are above the recommended cohort number, and we don't have the necessary staffing or classroom space to divide these into smaller cohorts. Working off of that, talking about the space concerns. The middle school model does not allow for self-contained classrooms, and neither teachers nor students should be transitioning throughout the day through multiple classrooms. The middle school hallway is also another space concern that we have. Because it dead-ends the way that it does, it cannot be used as, it can only, it cannot be used as a one-way hallway and becomes a pretty significant bottleneck of student traffic. And then finally, thinking about the middle school teachers interacting with between thirty and seventy-one students on a regular basis, and comparing that with between eleven and seventeen in, in our other grades. Second, thinking about equity. We want to provide age-appropriate instruction and fair access to technology, meals, and other supports. We are ready to leverage technology for student learning in grades five to eight. We are able to provide MacBooks for our sixth to eighth graders, and we have new iPads with keyboards for all of our students in grade five. And in regards to student support, special ed services would be available both online and in person. Additionally, online learning lends itself well to accommodations and modifications for students, and Ms. Griffin-Hagan will be speaking more to that after I'm done. And while students are in the enriched virtual learning, we want to make sure that everyone understands that the meal distributions would continue. Third, thinking about the wellness lens. We're committed to creating an environment that is supportive of student and staff mental health and wellness. This summer, North Hampton School teachers have been attending a lot of social-emotional professional development courses. Most of our elementary teachers, who had not previously attended a principal, are beginning their year-long training this month, actually. And the middle school team and the administration attended a four-day intensive responsive classroom training. All of these trainings, as well as the many other learning experiences that our teachers have participated in this summer, were done online. So, our teachers have had the experience of being students learning online. They've also had the opportunity to discuss with experts how to implement the social-emotional learning best practices in an online environment. They're prepared to hold meaningful advisory in community meetings online and to integrate social-emotional learning into their academic lessons. And we understand that many of our families would like our students to return to normal this September, but as Ms. Snyder said, our classrooms can't yet be normal. In-person would not be like it was, and we believe that we can provide meaningful opportunities for students to build community in small groups and to know and be known by their teachers and peers this fall. Finally, the teaching and learning component. We're committed to ensuring that every student is on track for success academically, socially, and emotionally. As I've mentioned, we have been and will continue to engage in professional development to provide teachers the tools they need to achieve this goal. The third trimester of 2019-20 was crisis remote teaching. I'm really proud of what we accomplished, but that's not the standard for 2020-2021. We have a new enriched virtual learning model at North Hampton School. This model allows each student to be taught by a highly qualified teacher, certified in the appropriate grade span and content with training and online instruction. Teaching would be both synchronous and asynchronous. Teachers would be providing direct instruction, personalized feedback, and create collaborative learning opportunities for their students. Students will be supported by the staff and faculty. They'd be coached and scaffolded as they develop important skills critical to online learning, such as communication, responsibility, time management. And teachers and students will be accountable for the learning objectives in the curriculum. Relevant and engaging assessments will provide evidence of student learning, and we will be reporting to parents. Next slide, please, Ms. Snyder. So, our concerns about the enriched remote learning model. We realized that in the spring, we had ebbs and flows for student engagement. So, we're going to need to use multiple strategies like student voice and choice, small group collaboration, to promote student participation and engagement. We'll need to provide meaningful assessments of student learning. These assessments need to be engaging and relevant for our students. We're going to need to begin the school year with a focus on developing classroom communities and meeting students' social and emotional needs. As we know from Maslow's hierarchy of needs, students need to feel safe and have a sense of belonging before they can learn. We'll need to examine scope and sequence of curricula. That's something that we're actually going to be doing across the board in, in all of our grades. We'll need to create a system for materials to be distributed and collected on a regular basis. This will both help promote students' connection with our schools and will allow for non-digital learning experiences, things like labs and projects, work like that. We'll need to create opportunities for small groups of students to safely meet face-to-face. And honestly, we don't know yet what this is going to look like, but that is a priority for us, to have those students in small groups in our, in our buildings. And we'll need to have benchmarks for transitioning to the phases of increased face-to-face instruction. When can we have larger groups of students together in the building? When can students meet for longer periods of time? These are all questions that need to be, need to be addressed. So, while we certainly have unanswered questions, we also have a priority list based on the lessons from the spring and the work that we've been doing this summer. And now I'll hand it over to Ms. Griffin-Hagan to talk about special education.
And this is a hard act to follow. You know, I was hoping, Greg, that my last board meeting would just be like a show-and-tell without, you know, drama and presentations, but you had to pull this off. So, thanks. Thanks for that. You know. So, for special education, you know, it falls in line with exactly what Susan and Becca have been saying. You know, for safety, just as Dr. R. Kellian said yesterday for the joint board, we're going to hope that special education meetings occur virtually to the maximum extent possible, but with flexibility to meet family need. Evaluations will continue with appropriate plexiglass dividers and PPEs. Any in-building support will not be pushed into the classroom again to maintain that cohort environment and to limit the number of, of, of adults that children are seeing and the number of children that adults are seeing. And, and Susan, Becca, and I are working closely in terms of the organization of that. The, the educational associates will stay with their assigned classes in supporting those special ed teachers. There are occasions where we split an EA's day between grades, and we will, we will limit that or, or not have that so that, again, it's that cohort-based model. And we're looking at the organization of special ed case managers, especially for pre-K through four, so that they are working with a cohort. We had a really robust conversation during the director's meeting today. We shared a lot of great ideas that, that I think will serve us well. In terms of equity, you know, we're going to provide services. We're going to make sure that services are delivered, and they are delivered well. That's what your special ed staff does at North Hampton School, regardless of the situation. That's what they did from March until June. That's what they have done with extended school year services, and that's what they will continue to do with the fall unequivocally. We will continue to look at creative use of staff and contracted providers, and we will continue to offer services as prescribed through IEPs. It will look different student to student, and that's why it's called an individualized education plan, so that we can individualize how that happens. As far as wellness goes, as Becca and Susan have emphasized, SEL, the social-emotional well-being for all students is of utmost importance, whether they are identified or not. For students who get counseling and behavioral support services, we will offer in-person and virtual, just like we will do for speech and language, OT, PT, or specialized instruction. That doesn't go away in this environment, and the SAU has been.
You muted yourself somehow.
My mother may have done that all the way from Ann Arbor, I'm just saying. As far as teaching and learning goes, this, this just emphasizes it again, what Susan and Becca have said. We have a highly qualified special education staff, related service providers, contracted providers, and EAs. We are well-resourced. We have learned to network. I have, and we have developed relationships with contracted providers who like to work with North Hampton. So, we have so many options available for us to deliver services to families. I feel comfortable in saying that we will be able to do that. And Becca, Susan, and I are in constant communication about that as Dr. R. Kellian and I are as well, so that that continues regardless. If I'm here, if I'm in Ann Arbor, if I decide to go to Bangladesh to rescue puppies. Progress monitoring, parent communication, IEP and service delivery, that will continue to be monitored and will occur. And, and we will continue to use technology as a specialist ed staff as we've been doing. I mean, we've done that whether we were in brick and mortar a hundred percent or not. Your special ed staff is always looking at technology and ways to use it to help modify and accommodate and support students. So, that will continue. As far as concerns, this was difficult for me because special ed parents have a lot of concerns, as does the special ed director. We want to make sure we're doing this well. So, special ed staff will work with students remotely and in person. And I had a hard time putting this as a concern because they can do this. This is what they've done. They can do this well. We will have continued vigilance with progress monitoring to ensure that whatever service delivery model a student is getting is working. As Becca and Susan have said, we will need a system to distribute materials. We'll need to create opportunities for small groups of students to safely meet face-to-face. And we will need to make sure that there is ample time for general ed and special ed staff to collaborate, which would have occurred in a brick-and-mortar building. It's just sort of emphasizing the obvious. So, you know, again, I feel like you have a strong team here. Special ed is a concern to the, to parents. I'm not minimizing that. We are already scheduling meetings to discuss what plans look like, what we need to do to make sure that a student has received what they need. And if, if, if we need to add extra services, we will. We, we already have a lot of those meetings scheduled. And, and a concern that I didn't add, but I'm sure it's on the minds, is how will we make sure that this transition occurs between Tracy and a new director? And I can tell you that this is a constant conversation. You have an incredibly ample administrative staff to include Susan and Becca and Dr. R. Kellian, and we will make sure that happens. I am not just abandoning North Hampton. I am committed to making sure that whatever transition process needs to happen will happen so that our students and our families are serviced. That's what will occur, not might occur. That's what will occur because you have a committed staff. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. So, the last, this is, this is optional for the board, but we thought we'd model some of the things that, that we learned in our summer trainings with responsive classroom. And one of them was to send folks off into small groups, which we can't really do here, but we wondered if you wanted to start off giving us feedback in that three-two-one format, three things you're concerned about, two things you like about the plan, and a question you have. I'm sure you have more than one question. If this suggestion doesn't fit with the, the plan for the rest of the discussion, Greg, that's fine. But we just thought we'd throw that out there as an idea. I'm going to stop sharing the screen and bring it back.
I'm open to any format. I think, you know, we can do the three-two-one. We can launch into questions. I'm sure we will cover it all.
It's up to you. It was just a thought we had. So, you, you decide.
Well, why don't we open it up right now for questions from the board? And if it's, and if we need to, we can move to that, to that model. But right now, I think there's a lot on people's minds. And so, I'd like to open up to the board for, for comments and questions. Thank you, guys, for taking us a level deeper so that we have a better understanding of kind of why the decisions were made and what, what went in, what facts went into that. And so, Tracy, appreciate your, your efforts there. And, you know, you can't run off to Ann Arbor and hide, especially from me.
I don't want to hide. I, I'm here. I'm committed. I, I want to make sure this works. I mean, we, you know, we've got an incredible community, and we're, we're going to be okay.
Appreciate it. Board members, any, any questions off the bat?
Oh, no, that's okay. Going through the whole plan and, and what we are looking at, the questions, the concerns, the likes, the dislikes, the people, the, how does this affect everyone? Can't be minimized, I guess. Enriched virtual learning going in, how do we sort it all out? My question, my major question here is, with what we are looking for, even for the students on our pre-K through fourth in our school, are we keeping them just to the lower level? Or are we spreading them out throughout the school, including the upper levels? And if we are utilizing the teachers willing to go to school for just those kids that are going to be there, so then for these other enriched virtual learners, the staff that is unable to go to school, are they going to be willing at any one point to meet in a small group in a classroom with the kids that are going to be learning from home?
So, I can take the second part of that. And, and unfortunately, the answer would be, it depends. So, there is, as we explained last night, there's a myriad of reasons that would lead someone to make some sort of a request. And so, the example I've used, which is not a North Hampton-centric example, but I think is helpful, is that we know that one of the issues we have are, are teachers of ours who live in the Hampton School District and have young kids in the Hampton School District. And Hampton has chosen a hybrid model that is either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. And so, the kids are in school two days a week in that model. And that has caused, that model has caused a considerable issue for our employees. And so, what we've talked about, because we've talked about people who are teaching in the enhanced virtual space to be in buildings, what we've talked about is that, that a reasonable accommodation for a person in that, in that space that I just laid out would be that they would be in the building during the time that their children are in school, at least. And that they might be teaching remotely, remotely remotely during those other three days so that at least some number of days a week, they would be available for the in-person meetings with small groups, those, those kinds of things. Someone who's out having to do with more of a medical issue of their own, of someone who lives in the home, I, I don't know. Every one of those is different, and we would have to go through with them. And that's what Charlene will do as part of this planning. And we have a number of those requests throughout the SAU. But Charlene would go through each of those, and a reasonable accommodation plan would be developed that could allow that person to be in the building sometime with additional PPE or not. So, that, that's the best answer I can give you.
So, to answer your question about the space, we have, we've identified spaces where classes could spread out a bit. However, I will tell you that first and second grade, our numbers are such that they probably will be able to stay in their rooms without, without splitting up too much. But we've identified the two art rooms on the first floor as potential breakout areas for the kindergartens and the outdoor space as well. We've identified the rooms upstairs across from the fourth grades as the breakout spaces for fourth grade. There's two rooms directly across the hall, one from each of the fourth grades. And then, special education staff currently share spaces upstairs, and we would need to separate them so that they could provide their own small group instruction. So, I think we would, we would be spreading out. So I think we would, we would be spreading out into the unused spaces that would be vacated. And it, some of that is dependent on a number of other factors, but that's essentially where we are at the moment.
But but Susan raises one other issue that I want to make sure we get into this conversation here. And that is that in every case, whatever district we're talking to over the, over the next two days, we've made assumptions about numbers of first graders, numbers of second graders, numbers of third graders. And and there is, there are some statewide data that tell us that those numbers may end up being high, right? We know that V-Lax is oversubscribed across the state. We know that the parochial schools are reporting waiting lists, and they've not been able to fill seats prior for lots and lots and lots of different reasons, those those two things being two, two very different models. So as we, what we have to get to next week and get to very quickly, whether it's South Hampton or an approval of some plan here tonight, is trying to verify numbers. Because it could very well be, as I said to you last night, that that model that we proposed last night is the model for right now that will change in many, if not all, of our districts. It will change due to the factors, those enrollment numbers, those staff availability numbers, the question that you just asked, Ramina, those kinds of things are going to require adjustments throughout the next five weeks, we know that.
Okay, thank you. So can I ask a quick question, maybe, Becca, in regards to the K through four and then five through eight? It seems like the fifth graders did get lumped in with middle school. What was the thought process around that, not being K through five and then six, seven, eight?
Susan, would you like me to do this one, or would you like to speak to it? I'm happy to.
Why don't you take it, and if there's anything to add, I can jump in.
So two significant factors are around class size and space and our ability to to address those with fifth grade successfully. And then we have robust technology to support fifth grade fully online. So both the challenge of of having fifth grade meet safely and the fact that we felt confident we could support them with robust technology were two of the key factors in in that plan.
And I'll just, honestly.
Classroom size, what size is fifth grade this year?
So I can, I can speak to that in just a second. What I was going to say is initially, if I could have made a recommendation, I would have said pre-K to three in person. Because our fourth and fifth grades are a little bit larger than the than the early primary grades. And so they are around between 15 and 17 in in both of those grades. But the fourth grade, we had, the teachers had already had a plan to to have a co-teaching model in in at least one of the classrooms. And so we had the ability to provide certified staff to to break the the fourth grade group up a little more sufficiently. Whereas with fifth grade, the only way to break them into smaller groups would have involved using EAs who are really responsible for special education services. And they're, you know, the kids wouldn't get the level of instruction that that they deserve in terms of having their their certified qualified teacher with them all the time. So they would, in order to to meet the cohort size standard for for most of the day, we couldn't, we felt more comfortable putting fifth grade in with the middle schoolers because they will be able to be with their teacher all to, all the time. And we had additional staffing available for fourth grade based on some planning we had done in the spring.
What is the fifth grade number? Yeah, sorry, Tom, same question.
Same question, yeah, there's 30 kids in the fifth grade class, I believe.
So in fifth grade, we have, we have 15, we have 15 and 16. And and in fourth grade, we have 16 and 16. So there, and then in in the younger grades, third grades are 12 and 13, second grades 11 and 12, first grades 12 and 13. So like, the numbers are just much lower in the lower grades. And so that's, that's where we came to, that's why we came to that recommendation.
And again, North Hampton recommendation, is it similar across the SAU that, you know, if it's more than 15 kids in a class, it's too big? Or is that a North Hampton specific decision?
We took a look within parameters across the SAU and also took a look, Tom, at those percentages of people who said they were interested in the remote environment.
Got it, so we may need to get to that then. Because I think it's important that we clearly talk about our our teachers and their safety and their their rights. So Greg, can I talk for a quick second?
Well, can I just say to that?
Can I get the target cohort, what is your target cohort number?
Well, the target would be 10, but we feel like we've got like elevens and twelves that are workable.
So, so, but I want to go back to what I said before, because I think if there's anything I've learned in the last five months, and this, and many of you know me a little bit, so this is not, this is not me. I've had to get comfortable with being uncomfortable with 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 not knowing things. And that's not, I don't like that. And so this, this, we're going to find out a lot when we, when we ask, we know that in all of our schools. So for example, you know, on 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 average across our SAU, 14% of people said Remote Learning Academy. We we need to see if that, those numbers hold. If those numbers hold in your K through four, we we could be back making slightly different recommendations of being able to bring in more kids, we could. It depends, but we need to get to getting that information.
Got it. So Greg, man?
Yes.
So first of all, thank you. This presentation was really excellent in terms of the details regarding the specific recommendations around North Hampton. Over the last 48 hours, I've kind of had an aha moment as well, because Dr. Lupini, you you mentioned last night and a couple of other times about the the impact that other SAUs that neighbor us has on our decision making. And I scratched my head a little bit about that at first. And then I did some research around the FFCRA and expanded family medical leave. And the fact that, you know, we need to make sure that we're not only honoring and protecting all of our employees, right, as any organization does, but following the law. And the fact that if if somebody has a school that's not going back full time, and they have a child in that school, that under the federal law, they have a right to 12 weeks of expanded COVID FMLA at pay, right? If 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 teachers aren't able to come in, in that example that you gave with Hampton, and we talked last night about substitutes, we don't have teachers to teach our kids. So we're trying to find something here that's, that's, again, threading the needle, right? So I I absolutely respect the personal decisions that teachers need to make for their own health, for people that they're taking care of, for their children, and that we need to work within the law to make sure that we're taking care of everybody, right? As I'm listening to this, though, I also wonder if there are additional strategies that we can consider. So we've got staff, we've got staffing questions, right? Because we don't know who's gonna, who who needs to to put in for time or or who can work remotely. And we need to figure that out and give you time to do that, I I hear you loud and clear. Let me actually pause there to make sure there's no corrections about what I said, and then I'll ask a couple of quick questions.
I think that's, I'll look to Mr. Farrar for the details on the, on the, on the law, but I think that's correct.
Yes, well said, Tom.
Yeah, so we, we, we've got some legal, legal constraints here that, and plus it just, you know, we have to do it. Now, there's also families that are in a pinch. So and and while they may have the same rights, right? Maybe they've already used it in the spring, maybe they can't really, they don't feel comfortable doing it. So we've got to figure out how to take care of these students and families. So are there other strategies that we can think about? So for example, and I'm just spitballing here, could we open the gym for, and I'm not really looking for answers, I'm just brainstorming, open the gym for middle schoolers who or fifth graders who are doing the enriched virtual learning, have some proctors there, give them access to what high-speed internet, have it be on a signup basis in case, you know, they, they, they want to see other kids or in case they don't have anybody at home to to be with them. Could we do things in middle school, like, once we find out the staffing, maybe have half the kids in, as Libby Needham talked about, so that, you know, there's some social, emotional learning and exchange and connection, and maybe even phase that in? Can we, can we look at just, and I'm not trying to overcomplicate things, but can we look at kind of some blended models that help to accommodate all and and fulfill our legal obligation?
Well, well, okay, so thank you for that. You're not, you're not overcomplicating at all, because you may remember from the presentation, I think it was in the presentation last night, we have talked about some community partnerships around programming for students who are on more remote experiences. The two examples that we've used in our conversations have been North Hampton rec and have been SaaS in Seabrook. So, so, right, those are, those are ideas that we've, we've kicked around in this idea of how do we bring in, how do we bring in kids, small groups of kids, working up to larger group of kid, groups of kids over over time? The, you know, the other one I'll offer that you you didn't mention that, and and I think, I don't think you were at the joint board meeting two weeks ago, but I I mentioned at the joint board meeting that I have colleagues in other SAUs, they tend to be single district SAUs. Ours is a little bit more complicated for the idea I'm about to throw out. But they, they are extending to their employees the the ability to bring their children to their districts for this year. Why are they doing that when it's not in their collective bargaining agreement? Where they have space in a classroom? They're doing it because that gives that employee the accommodation that they need in order to 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 be in the building.
Yep, I love that.
So it's a, it's, it, those districts are looking at it and saying, this is a win-win. So all those examples, I think, should be on the table for us to explore, yes.
So I've heard today from a North Hampton school teacher who is supposed to go to school, and yet her kids are not because they're in those upper grades, and she teaches in the lower grades. How do we kind of sort it all out? And how come we didn't look at a more of a hybrid, giving all kids on a smaller scale a chance? Two days, Wednesday off cleaning or whatever, and then two days for the other kids.
Well, in terms of our employees, the hybrid didn't buy us anything. Because even if we ran the same hybrid as Hampton, the people in Hampton actually have the same problem. So in terms of our staffing, it actually didn't achieve any advantage. And Dr. Hobbs, Becca, I know you talked about modeling, particularly in the return to instruction discussion. So do you want to, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the the primary things we discussed, and I, and it's been discussed in this meeting, is in in that kind of hybrid setting, you're really only having two contact days with a student per week as a teacher. And the rest of the time, you're going to have to do some sort of asynchronous assignment or passive learning. And it struck from a curriculum standpoint, Becca, please step in if if I'm off on this, that actually being able to deliver a lesson five days a week would be a much stronger model, given the fact that it would be online, online backbone of that instruction.
So the staff that is going to school for that pre-K through fourth, is there five days a week?
Yes.
Yes.
So that, I mean, eh, boy, a lot of, a lot of ball, a lot of balls in the air on this one. And so I hear what you're saying, Dave, but but there's a large group that also needs to be accommodated in in the parents that that really, that have to work, that have dual income homes, that need their kids in school because of this. And so, you know, two days on, two days off, three days on, three days off, it might not be ideal from a teaching point of view. I think we're all on on board with getting kids in the school for socializing reasons, as well as face to face, is good on any level. And I I guess I would just challenge sort of thinking differently. And and I know, I don't want to, I don't want it to come off that you're not trying to think, think differently. We did, Susan mentioned how this is going to look different. And yet, I feel in some areas, we're trying to maintain normalcy, you know, keeping the hallways clear so that the the eighth graders can transition from classroom to classroom is a reason not to send eighth graders back. Well, there's nothing that says they have to transition from classroom to classroom. I I think if 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 we're sending kids into school, then what must be true is that we feel confident that that it's safe and that we've provided a safe environment for them. So if we've provided a safe environment for them, is there a way to provide that same safe environment for the rest of the the school, but maybe differently? Maybe if the goal is to decrease the class sizes, we need to think about teaching up and teaching down to staff appropriately.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what that means. Teaching up and teaching down.
If we have a shortage, so many of our teachers are certified beyond their grade level. So in a, in a way to, you know, if we have a shortage of teachers in the middle school, maybe there's a way where we can stagger two days or one week on or one week off or three days on, three days off. And the the teaching staff can act as a sort of a unit that can move across the groups that are in the school at that time.
I I don't know how to say, I'll say this again, I don't know how to say this any differently. These are the assumptions that we've made based on the numbers that we have. As we get real numbers, as we are allowed to get into the work of actually trying to see if this plan, or making this plan work, we will see if those numbers hold. Again, across the state, they, those numbers are down in many public school districts. And we can make adjustments in terms of the numbers of students who we can bring in from there. And and Ramina, to the question about an employee who contacted you, they really need to talk to HR, not the school board, about about their particular situation and how we might help accommodate them.
And I don't even think that it was more anything in 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 specific as far as that goes. But I think splitting up the school plan, it was really where people got hung up on. And even Jocelyn had called in here earlier, who has two kids in, one at home, both parents working. If we're going to do one or the other, I think we're better off almost going enriched virtual learning for everybody and giving a chance to some of those kids to go in at times, small groups for math, or this, that, or the other thing with special teachers. But I mean, it's just, I think it's having that split plan where it's difficult on a lot of people. Not, nothing personal to me, I I suppose, because I have one child, and whatever he, whatever we decide to do here tonight for him works for me one way or the other. But it's, you know, not everybody's in the same, obviously, situation. And I get it, I mean, looking at the, at the chart from even last night's presentation, we have heck of a lot more parents that are willing and feeling safe to send their kids to school, given the current, I suppose, data on COVID. I see this just going more remote as we head into this cold flu COVID season. So we are eventually, most likely, going to end up there anyways. So I'm just trying to see it from from that perspective on where we're going to end up and how we're going to try to do the best we can with the time we have that things are okay, not great, but okay.
I I think the challenge is we don't know where we're going to end up, right? And so we're making assumptions and we're and we're planning for what could happen. I guess, Bill, we've talked about this, is in all the planning for what could happen, where where I'm concerned that we're sacrificing our first effort to to get as many kids back into the school. If 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 we deem it safe for some, then it's safe for all. And from, and then it becomes a numbers game. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't have the numbers, if we don't have enough teachers to cover, to cover the numbers, then then really, that's, that's kind of where we're stuck at. And and do we, do we talk about temporary employment for for additional staffing? We, we, going into COVID, we talked a lot about what kind of, what funds do we have available and what do we need to do? Do we need to purchase more online computers? Do we purchase more iPads? Do we need to staff differently because of this? And I know it's probably the last thing you want to hear right now at this point.
I can't, yeah, I, there's a piece of that, that, there's a basis in that question that I can't get into publicly around numbers and those kinds of things at at a particular school. So I I think we've, I think we've done that in terms of look at, looking at licensing. We spent quite a bit of time on people's licensing and the creativity that we have because of that licensing. And in terms of looking at the requests that we have and how they they work out. But but I've tried to illustrate that as best I can with with you all knowing that I can't discuss that pub, that piece of it publicly.
Rick, can I jump in with a question?
Yes, please.
Is there a plan in place for students that are in the school to transition to remote learning if they end up in a quarantine situation where they can't attend? Can they transition to the remote learning academy seamlessly in that situation?
David, you wanna take that?
Sure, well, we've set the expectation in place, even in the face-to-face environment, that there's a, there's a parallel, there needs to be a parallel online version of the class, or at least a remote component of that class. And in your case, you know, it really, it would really be an academic decision for the student, you know, depending on how long-term this would be, whether or not it would jump into a remote, the remote academy or to stick with the face-to-face, sorry, the remote component of the face-to-face class. You know, I think, I think that's gonna have to be dealt with on an individual basis. But I think either, either is possible.
And then another question, just based on the technology. I heard that the sixth through eighth graders are gonna have issued devices. And we talked earlier, I think in the summer, about the school, make sure the school has enough capability and bandwidth for all the students to be doing this. Has that been assessed and are we, where we need to be on that?
Yeah, Jason's not here, but, but that, you're, you're right about that. That was part of, of the work with the technology directors to make sure that if we had teachers, I think the, the, the sort of the measure they were using is if we were gonna have teachers teach remotely from the building, that we had enough to push that out and, and to come in. And I, yes, I believe that assessment's been done in each of our buildings and each of our buildings meet that standard now, yes.
And in terms of devices, we, we had a certain amount of money that was already in the budget for next year to purchase additional MacBooks for our middle school. And then we were purchasing a number of iPads with keyboards. And we used our CARES grant money to purchase more of those. So we've positioned ourselves so that we feel like we have enough devices and we'd be able to deploy those to all of our students in different devices and different grade levels. But the, you know, we have the most, we have the newest devices available for five through eight.
And to connect the two questions that you had, Martin, to speak with what Susan was saying, the, the students will be comfortable in their classrooms using these devices, using these online tools for paid for. And so if they do need to be out of school for a given time for quarantine, that they will have what they need to be able to stay with their, current with their classes. Certainly, the, the online learning academy could be an option, but the pacing could be different from the class. The tools used by the instructor could be different. So there's additional considerations there. But, you know, we've outfitted with technology with this in mind.
Right, and, and I, I just need to say that, you know, our case manager in grade two and three before COVID was already introducing certain technology tools to help differentiate learning for students. So, you know, obviously that will continue to happen, but that was already part of our protocol. So that's, you know, that, that's an easy transition for us and, and for the students. Because students who needed certain technology, they, they were already getting used to using it.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to join in here. So we're sending kids back K through fourth. So we basically feel we can keep our teachers safe. We know how to do that across the country. We know how to stop the spread if people are safe. Our doctors go back to work. They know how to keep themselves safe. They know how to wear the correct masks and, you know, all, all the necessary hand washing and hand sanitizing and everything that's going into reopening businesses and dentist offices and et cetera. I can't leave this meeting tonight feeling that we can leave at least our fifth graders at home. I can't understand how a 10-year-old is supposed to be left home by themselves. So for me right now, we, we get to this standstill and everyone kind of, we stop talking for a second and we don't really know where we're going. But I, I think that highly needs to be reconsidered. I, I actually feel like it's criminal to say that a kid that's in fifth grade should be able to make their meals by themselves and be home by themselves and be teaching themselves throughout the day. So if anything comes of any agreements that we come to tonight or, I, I think we highly need to reconsider our fifth graders in leaving them out of this. Cause there, there's a reason why middle school is sixth through eighth. They are still babies and they still need looking after.
Well, well, middle school's sixth through eight in your district. I'll say that to start, okay? Cause it's not that way everywhere. And, and so, let me finish. So I, I've said a couple of times, the numbers may lead us there. The, the administration's given you an argument as to why the decisions were made in terms of numbers, in terms of those safety elements that you talked about earlier. And, and I said two or three times now that we will see if those are the numbers when we actually see who's returning, right? And
Are we returning in fourth grade too? Is that what, if the numbers go the other way?
Well, the numbers aren't gonna go the other way. We're not gonna end up with more students than we, than we ended last year with. That's not going to happen, right? So what I'm saying is, what we're seeing, not only in this state, but in other places, is that numbers are down. Numbers are down because of homeschooling. Numbers are down because people are choosing other options. If those numbers of people, and our numbers may be down because people choose the remote learning academy. If those numbers end up down in any of our districts, what we can do is reassess the plan to see if we have spaces, if we can create adequate social distancing to bring more kids in.
Okay, so if a teacher can handle 10 kids in a pod and stay safe, couldn't they also handle a, a different section of 10 kids later in the day? If you were to shorten a day and bring fifth graders in safe for
That would require transportation. Matt did the estimate on that. We gave that to you a couple of months ago. That was about $7 million across the SAU, I believe the number was, to add a second round of transportation. So that, we looked at that two months ago, that idea.
So Dr. Lupini, and if you don't know, it's okay. But so what is the number that if fifth grade goes to X, then they would be in the building with K through four?
I'm, I'm the wrong person. I, I will say this, though. We, we, we have, in some of our other schools, because of the rooms available, we've made different assessments based on sizes of rooms, how we can configure them, what we have for furniture, those kinds of things. I think Susan gave you the general number earlier of 10 to 12 is that number, right? And so we may be able to bring in additional grade levels. I wanna be clear to Aaron's question. We, we may be able to bring in additional grade levels depending on where we get when we actually put out how many people are interested in the remote academy, how many people are sending back their children within, within these models. That's when we can come to you and say, you know, factors are gonna play out over the next two, three, four weeks. That's, that's a major one of them and it may be possible to do more. It may be possible to do more.
So I thought it was more an issue of staffing and not so much how many kids do we have? We know we have 70, what was it? 68% of our parents have said that they would send.
No, no, you don't know that. What you know is that's across the school. So we have a breakdown that we've looked at, right, roughly, within grade spans and with individual grades. And, and you, you know this, that it's not 68% in every grade.
Right, of course, yeah.
Right, so, so we, we have some of those, those data. We had much, for example, a school where we had much different data from one grade span to another was Southampton, where we had very low numbers in, in, in the K to two range. And we could make some different observations based on those numbers, right? What we know is how many students we ended the year with. What we know is roughly what we have within those grade spans. And that's what led to the recommendations. But again, we can expand upon those. If, if we see that when we actually put out registration, I'll call it for lack of a better term, right, for the in-person model, it could very well be that we can, that we can do more. Because we, because we don't know. We know what we have from surveys, but, but what we've found, I think I said this last night, what we know from those surveys is that, I mean, Andy gave you a number earlier of staff on the survey. That's three weeks removed from our survey and the numbers on some of those questions moved 18 points. So what we know is, is these numbers are changing whenever we've seen surveys, whenever we've done surveys. So we wanna capture hard numbers of who, who, in this model, how many fourth graders do we have? How many third graders do we have? And then we can come back to you, as we will in every district, with adjustments from that.
So when you're working on that number, you're working on the, the regular projection? Or are you working off of the data that's come in from fourth grade parent participants that say, I won't send my kid back or I will send my kid back?
Yes, both. Yes, we're working off, we're working off that number, but since not everyone filled out the survey, we had decent responses. But we can extrapolate a guesstimate from that as to what that number might be.
So that's the number of income, of students returning to school that you're basing your cohorts off of? And then you're basing your staffing for those cohorts off of that?
And, and we're looking at the, as I said last night, we're looking at the interaction between, between that staffing data that I have and these cohorts and seeing what we believe we can do when we, when we glom all those elements and, and, and try to figure out what's possible. Yes.
And can I ask a question about, sorry, Tom?
No, no, good.
A question about the cohort number of a target 10 to 12? When a, when a single classroom teacher is teaching, you know, 15 to 20 kids, why is the cohort target that much lower?
That's what's allowed for the social distancing that we're putting in place in those classrooms.
And the social distancing is the six foot without masks or three foot with masks? Or what's the, what's the model that we're using?
We're using the March CDC and what's been recommended by the medical people we're talking to, which is six feet and masks.
Six feet with masks.
In the building.
So, so we're running, we run out of space as well.
Well, in, as Susan said, in many classrooms, we, we can, we can make that work. They described earlier the, the issue in fourth and fifth grade, right?
So, and so just so you know, I mean, really, the efforts are there. I mean, we, we're, you know, we've got, we're measuring, we're, you know, we're going to be asking teachers to, to figure out what's furniture that they don't need that we can store so that they can make more space to, you know, have kids seating available. We're probably gonna take rugs out and, you know, that, that kind of group meeting area doesn't need to have the rug because that's, those are germ, you know, germ magnets. And, you know, we'll probably take some of those things out. And then when they do have meetings, they'll have to pull chairs over and, and things like that. So, so, you know, there really are a lot of things we've thought about to try to maximize the space and, and, you know, figure out how we can, how we can do this safely. Cause that's really the, you know, that's, that's the key thing. Just, just like Becca said, it's like that feeling of safety and belonging that we really, we, we really have to make sure that we, that we, that, that everybody's comfortable, including our teachers. So it's, it's just, it's, it's just a challenge. And, and we are committed to, to getting as many kids back as we can. And just like Bill said, if, if, you know, if the remote academy draws numbers of kids to, to, to lower that cohort size so that we feel it's safe, then we absolutely will make that recommendation. And I don't know when the next time the board's scheduled to meet, but, you know.
Well, we, we, I mean, we'd make that, we'd need to make those adjustments. And boards will need to be flexible because we, I mean, one of the things we said last night is the one thing we know about the plan we put forward is it will, it will change over the next five weeks.
Yeah, so the other part is, so, and it's, it's great that we're talking about how many families are gonna choose remote learning academy and what will our enrollment be? And that certainly is a part of the cohort size. The other part that we need to help you get to is how many of our teachers are gonna request accommodations because of what's happening in other districts and what's going on? So we know what our staffing is, right? So it's, it's, it's enrollment and it's staffing. And they both need to come together. We need to figure that out.
Yes, it's all those factors, yes.
Yeah. So that's yet, that's an unknown entity. We have, we have a number of, of teachers who are not, not coming back due to their choice. And then we have a number of teachers who are, who are going to be held to a decision based on what their children's district say.
We have a number of teachers who've, who've indicated the possible or definite need for some sorts of accommodations under the laws that we talked about last night because of their own health conditions, the health conditions of people in their home or their, or their childcare issues, largely in those three buckets, yes.
So I, I'm not sure that it, when I read the guidelines, that it seems to be six feet and masks.
I'm happy, we have Dr. Guidi here, who's one of our, one of the people we've been working with. I, I said to Greg earlier, I'm happy to bring him, him in for this discussion, if, if that's what you'd like. I'm not a medical expert. I'm not, I'm not going to try to talk about that.
I don't, I don't wanna push making anyone uncomfortable. But to say that, you know, that's the recommendation, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily maybe reading it the same way. But to say that we can't bring our students in to a building because other kids get to be six feet away and masks and we're going to sacrifice older children for that and, and their education?
I, 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 that's not what I said. That's not what I said, and I, I, I wish you'd rephrase that.
I'm not trying, I'm not saying that we're sacrif, I'm not trying to say. I, I apologize. I'm just trying to think that maybe there's room for bringing more students in if we're being overly
Doesn't appear to be a room issue, I think. From what I heard is that the accommodations to, to, to accommodate the six-foot rule or guideline is, is being able to be accommodated through these grades. It sounds more to me that, that between the variable of, of the, the staff that hasn't yet been able to make a decision because they're hanging in the mid, in air, and then the staff that has health concerns that have already let it be known, you know, that, that's a large variable that, that can really affect, that can really affect the other grades. It doesn't appear, Susan, I might be mishearing it, but it didn't appear that space is a concern. There's cafeteria, there's a gymnasium, you've got two tents out back. I felt like space was fine.
We have space, but I will say it's a concern for the middle school grades because those are the largest class sizes. And, you know, to put, to put middle schoolers in the cafeteria without their, you know, without their teacher and with someone who's not providing instruction doesn't feel like it's educationally sound to us. So, so we have space to spread out, but, but it isn't, just like we said, it's that intersection of appropriate staffing, cohort size, and space.
I think it really is very much about the interaction of those elements. I don't think, I don't think it's, it's any, I don't think it's any one of them. I, I think it's the intersection of those elements.
So, so we, we clearly need to figure out a way to get you the access to continue the work. I get that. I think there's a couple of pieces that I'd like to see if we can't add in to get you to think about as, and I know you're already thinking about it, so I didn't mean to say it in a, in a jerky way. But things like, well, it may not be sound to have kids in a cafeteria without their teacher. It may be better to have a kid in a cafeteria with high-speed internet access, adult supervision, rather than being at home alone as a fifth grader, right? So trying to figure out if there's some ways we can support families and students, even if they're remote learning on campus. Trying to figure out if there's a way to get fifth graders as part of the K through four cohort. And then over time, trying to figure out if there's a way, once we have all the data, to rotate and have a hybrid model for middle school six, seven, eight. Some kids are in some days, right?
All we need to get those data that you're asking for in that second element is your authorization. is your authorization of a plan so that we can see the number of kids we'd have.
Yep. So how do we, Matt, I may lean on you for this. How do we frame a motion? Like, let you go forward and do what you need to do, knowing that there may be a baseline recommendation, but that we're looking to expand beyond the baseline recommendation once you have the data that you need to to set that, to make that evaluation?
Wait. So the so I think, I think any any recommendation to proceed with the proposal is with the understanding that this is going to change. So it's it's approval for this. You know, for this, to proceed with this plan, knowing that it's 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 the plan's going to change within, you know, it's an iterative process. So I I think it, I think it's simply approving the plan, knowing that we're going, we're coming back with something different, you know, in the near future.
I mean, Tom, it could be as simple as approval of the plan and ask us to report back on the feasibility of of expanding beyond the K to four model and in person in 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 two weeks. I would think we'll have some beginnings of those data within two weeks.
Yeah, I think I would be comfortable with that as well. I know it's, I know it's the intention, but maybe it's the intention that we need to add in.
So so let me make, let me see if I can make that motion. I'd like to make a motion, Greg. I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan, proposed plan as presented with the recommendation that the SAU and administration provide additional options after they have the data that they need to understand staffing and enrollment.
With an eye toward toward expanding beyond K to four.
Exactly, thank you, with an eye towards expanding beyond K to four and providing students access, remote learning students access to the school.
Well, that's part of the plan.
Okay, gotcha.
That's actually part of the plan, so.
Yep. We need to rewrite that and read it again. Did you get that, Rhonda?
I'm working, I'm working on it, but, you know, it kind of went all over, like, so.
Sideways? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan as recommended. The request that the SAU and administration report back to the board.
Okay, wait a minute, it it just went out again, okay. Went sideways again. What I had so far, Tom, motion to approve the proposed plan as presented with the recommendation that the SAU administration provide additional options to understand.
You froze. But to to expand in-school learning beyond K through four.
Two options to expand in-school learning.
Oh, boy.
Rhonda froze? That's terrible.
Yeah.
That's not good because she's the host. Thank God you're the co-host, Susan. Next man up.
Do you really want me to, like, try to type it? I can't, she has to do it.
We're gonna have to let her come back in.
Right here, as Tom, can I make an amendment to your amendment?
Yes, yes.
A request, a request from the school.
Request, you're right, you're right. Yes, thank you.
So if you say it again, I can type it in the message. You want me to type it in the message and then she'll have it?
Looks like she just bailed and was going to try to re.
Come back in.
Right, but if, do you want me to type it in there or you just wait for her?
She got it.
Okay.
Unless she's lost her internet access.
It's reloading. I just got a text from her, so.
She did all that typing, Susan, I don't want you to have to do rework.
She just texted me, Susan is co-host, so there you go.
So Susan, you want me to try this again, do it the right way?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented with the request that the SAU and administration report back the feasibility of expanding in-school learning beyond K through four.
Is everybody there?
Yes, hi. Nice to see you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Tom, do you want to attach a timeline to that request?
Yeah, seventy-two hours. I'm just kidding.
Where?
Dr. Lupini, do you say you'd have the information in like two weeks? Is that what you said?
What is tomorrow? Seven?
Seven.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would guess by the, I mean, we have to. On the twenty-first, we 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 have to.
So who, who, did somebody write down this motion?
I just, here, I just wrote it in, how do I get it to go? Let me see.
If you, oh, okay.
There it is.
Recommendation as presented. You see, I wonder if I can, I don't know if it'll let, can paste that into Board Docs?
Yeah, why not?
I'm gonna try.
And then, Dr. Lupini, is there anything that we need to do to give you authority to expand the the idea that you had about teachers bringing students into our district?
Tom, before you go there, I'm going to ask for a second to the motion and then we can open it up for further discussion.
Sorry, sorry, I think.
We have a second.
I got it. And so Martin is seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, so Tom, some further discussion.
Yeah, so thank you. Is there anything that we need to to do to get you to, give you the authority to to explore the can students from other districts come here if it helps out?
Oh, it's complicated, right? Because what we would have to do within these parameters that we've talked about is identify seats throughout all the districts. And that's what makes it complicated in a five-district SAU. I think if you, I think, because I have talked to a chair or two in other districts about the ideas. They they called me, said, did you talk about this two weeks ago? So I think if you, if if you were inclined to express support for the idea, if if a number of our districts did that, then it would become a tool that we could, that we could utilize in trying to help to trying to help utilize it as an accommodate, as a potential accommodation for people. If that makes sense? Did that make sense?
Yep. I'm only one person, but I'd be inclined to explore that, I don't know why the rest of the board feels.
Quick comment on that. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, it's a very creative idea. But to bring in kids from other districts into our school before we have all of our students back, I think is a that's kind of a tough one to to get past, having other kids there before all of our our kids are in the school.
Hundred percent, but what it would do is that it would actually help us get there faster because it would free up staffing so that we could get all of our kids back.
It wouldn't just be your district, it would be other districts where we were under the number of students and only in the grades we were bringing in, right? So it, so you're, you're right in that a sixth grader in your district or a seventh grader in your district might still be out. But bringing in, you know, Hampton Falls, for example, agreeing to bring in a third grader might get another teacher back for you. Will it make sense?
I I think it's nothing worth exploring, I just think it's a it's tough to get past having other kids in our school, but if we can make the numbers work like Tom said, that brings more kids into our school, it's nothing worth exploring.
Yeah, I I I agree. I think, you know, Martin, to Martin's point, it's bad optics for the for the for the few. It's it's a, it's definitely a community-based, you know, the ability to get a teacher back into the school helps our community. And so it's a give and take there, and for some, it might look really bad. There, I would expect some, you know, pushback on that. But I think we are, we're trying to think for the greater good here, for sure.
Definitely open to it, definitely, definitely worth exploring. I'm just worried about that one, that one concern that pops up immediately.
Yeah, I agree, Martin.
I may not have an issue with that myself, if it means bringing more teachers in. But I just have a really tough time with the idea that we are not doing the same thing for our, all our kids. It's kind of really tough to 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 swallow and and vote on trying to take out so much. So I wish we could have come up with a solution where we gave kids a chance in each grade level, but it doesn't look like we're gonna get there.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got numbers problems. And so the 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 chance that that we're forced, you know, the chance you speak of that we're forced into right now is is not no education. It's it's a, it's a remote education right now. And I think in two weeks, we will be looking at, I hope in two weeks, we'll be looking at some other numbers and we can, we can make this an evolving model as Dr. Lupini has alluded to.
Is, this might not be something we're allowed to talk about or something that maybe we've gone down that path already. But is there the ability to hire more staff if that's where we need to go?
I'm sorry, if that's where, what do you mean by if that's where we need to go? I want to make sure.
If that's a means of getting our kids into the building is looking to hire, like, like substitutes, something that we could do?
Okay, thanks, yeah. So so we were, as we discussed last night, we're worried about our substitute numbers. They're down. We're doing some things to try to add to those roles, but they're, they're down considerably. We're hearing that across the southeast that many subs are dropping off of of lists. So that's a, that's a concern for us. You know, it would, it's a, it's, to go back to to Tom's sort of explanation of the law, there are certain potential, if if you, if you can't come up with a reasonable accommodation for someone that allows them to keep working, there are certain payouts. They can collect certain amounts of money over a certain period of time, okay? So it's really about how much money you end up paying out in terms of them losing sick leave or those kinds of things versus then your ability to bring in essentially a replacement on salary schedule for them and how much of that, Matt, Matt will correct me on all of this, by the way. It's about how much of that your budget can support.
It's all additional.
How'd I do, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, that, 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 that's pretty accurate. I mean, bottom line is we didn't budget for extra teachers. So, I mean, we don't, we don't currently have those funds. Is it, you know, it'd be difficult to to find additional funding for additional teachers. That that's, I mean, that's not something that we've that that is really feasible at this point.
And it's not only the budget, it's finding teachers and getting them assimilated in the next five weeks.
That's right.
Yeah, we're really late.
Well, I also just feel like we are at it, obviously, everyone is affected across the way and we are going to have a lot of college students, a lot of college students that are, you know, maybe close to degrees, that are at home looking for jobs, they're going online. Having that as a resource is is, could be very valuable.
It's true. That's absolutely true. It's, it's, we talked about that actually with Mr. Saltmarsh because of a situation involving his family in college and how there are going to be more kids in their communities taking online courses, those kinds of things, and not going back to campus. And there is an opportunity to potentially add to substitute roles there, yes. It's a good point.
So maybe looking to waive some sort of certifications in some way or going like an alternative route where, you know, there are people that have a lot of credits and it might not be education, but it could go towards.
Sure. That isn't, no, I mean, you're describing two different people now. That there's college students who might be our subs and then there, then there are people who you're talking about who may be able to go alternative routes and whatever. But much of that still goes back to what Mr. Farrar said, and that is the budget to support them.
Well, I personally think it's like one of the most important things that our money could go towards is getting these kids back.
We don't disagree with that at all. We have a budget for substitute teachers, we have a budget for our position teaching. And if we have to pay certain amounts out off of that, you know, we we, one of our responsibilities is to help you meet meet that budget in creative ways, and we will, we will do that. But we were just merely trying to lay out the challenges within that if if we have these kind of situations, which again, what we're trying to do is come up with strategies to avoid those situations and make it so that your teachers can teach. That's our end goal.
Want to take a vote?
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table. Are we ready to vote?
Aaron Stanton? Aaron Stanton?
Do you feel like I really don't have any choice there? I have to, I have to say yes for the K through fourth kids, so yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Dermina Peterson?
No.
And Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda.
All right, next, yeah. Last thing on this, then we're done. Because it came up from a couple of parents in the past, and I know it's part of the plan. But it might be really great, Susan, if over the next couple of weeks, we could get something out to the community about what the enriched remote learning looks like and how it's different than it was during crisis learning. That might help to allay some concerns.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we can, we can do that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is under new business school board audit questionnaire. This is something that we do every year. I can't remember, Matt, if you did the reading or if James had to read it. I think you have to read this.
Yeah, I have the pleasure. So as part of the annual audit process, we do, our auditor, Plodzik and Sanderson, does ask that the board members answer some questions in regard to financial controls. So I'm gonna go through a list of questions and ask that the board answer. So the first question is, do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity?
No. No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulars or others alleging fraud?
No.
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
No.
Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow? And we do have a copy of of that code for you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So if yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July first, twenty nineteen, to which the school district SAU or any retirement, savings, pension or other similar plan was or is to be a party? The first item is the sale, purchase, exchange or leasing of property.
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services or facilities.
No.
No.
Transfer or receipt of income or assets.
No.
No.
Maintenance of banking balances or compensating balances for the benefit of another.
No.
No.
Other transactions?
No.
All right, does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds?
Yep, yes.
Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity. So typically, we So typically, we will update the board via the superintendent and the SAU office. However, if, please elaborate on that, if that's not how you feel.
No, you tell us.
All right. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes, every month.
What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports?
Yes.
Revenue and expenditure reports are reviewed monthly at our board meetings by the business administrator.
So we'll review the, so for example, in this meeting, we'll be reviewing the expenditure report. The first month, there's not a revenue report as there's, there really is no revenue to be reported early in the fiscal year. Has the board approved the disaster recovery plan in the event of a loss or interruption of the IT function?
We can say yes now.
It is a yes now, and we do have a copy. Is there a written investment policy adopted?
Yep. Yes.
And that was last reviewed and approved on October 22nd of 2019. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees?
Yep. Yes.
Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of a treasurer?
Yes.
And those two accounts are the student activity funds, which are managed by the principal, Susan Snyder, as well as the expendable trust funds, which are managed by the Northampton trustees of the trust funds. Has the board approved a fund balance policy and compliance with GASB?
Yep.
Yeah.
Does the school district SAU have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, and who is responsible for them.
No knowledge.
Since the World Health Organization's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to coronavirus COVID-19, how has the board adopted, adapted to making financial decisions, reviewing budget versus actual reports, and approving vendor and payroll manifest? So I'll, I'll just summarize kind of the actions that we've taken. So we have transitioned all board meetings to a Zoom format. All financial reports are provided and uploaded on Board Docs for review. Additionally, all our manifests, that includes payroll and accounts payable, are reviewed and approved via DocuSign, electronic signature. Is there any additional information that the board would like to add?
I have this time.
All right, so I will complete, fill in the remainder of this form and submit it to the board chair via DocuSign for review and approval. Thank you.
Matt. Next item on our agenda is Extracurricular Stipends Committee Recommendations.
Yes, so per the 2019 to 2023 collective bargaining agreement with our, with our teachers' union C, an extracurricular stipend committee is formed on an annual basis, and the purpose of this committee is to review our current extracurricular stipends and then make any recommendations to the school board for adjustments. This committee did convene. This consisted of a number of our, of our Northampton teachers, as well as board members and administration. Upon completion of that committee, we, the committee is recommending that the school board approve renaming the field hockey stipend to a flex athletic stipends, and this will allow the flexibility and and ability to offer different sports based on student participation and need. Oftentimes, from a year-to-year basis, there may be a desire or participation levels for different sports at Northampton, so we're just looking for the flexibility to adjust that stipend accordingly. Further, the committee recommends renaming the games club stipend to academics club, and examples of those would be the Geo Challenge, Spelling Bee, D and D, and Coder Z, and this will also allow for that similar flexibility based on student participation and need. These adjustments require no additional funding or cost to the school district.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Extracurricular Stipends Committee Recommendations.
I gotta be able to mute you, Aaron, myself.
Are we ready for the vote?
Yep.
Aaron Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Vote has been recorded.
When you're on to, next item is our financial report.
So the, so I haven't included the year or date expenditure reports. Obviously, we are only a month into the fiscal year, so there's, there are not, there are not a great deal of expenditures to date. I'll also point out that you'll see many of the salary accounts, you know, have not been expended or have no allocation at all. That's because a good deal of our staff do not start until the end of August and September, so that payroll encumbrance has not been included. You know, I do want to note a few accounts that, that are overextended, one of which is our professional services account for special education, which is, you know, that's a large encumbrance, but we are slightly over by just over $1,000. This, this account is for our contracted services, so, you know, you know, our psychologists or PTOT, those type of related, related services. Additionally, if you go, if you go to page three, you'll see our computer instruction equipment account is over budget by $2,000, just over $2,000. And this reflects some of that extra spending that we, that we invested in for our additional devices and laptops for, you know, for this remote environment, or potential remote environments. On page number five, you'll see under the buildings accounts, equipments, we're over budget by, you know, just over $27,000. And this is primarily due to the rental of our, of the tents that are being erected for the outdoor classrooms for the first two months of the year. Otherwise, you know, like I said, you know, most, most of our accounts have very little expenditures. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, though, that you may have.
Any other questions on financial report?
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, ratification of nominations of personnel. Is that a, do we do that non-public then? Sorry, Bill.
Yes, you need a non-public.
I'd like to make a motion to go under non-public, right? Do we have to do that?
Oh, just, we'll check the agenda. We have resignations that'll go under non-public as well. There's also free dates on there as well as new dates. I think that will be added shortly, also. I would like to possibly ask a few questions. Into non-public, Tom's about to make the motion. I see the motion is made under B. I was wondering if we could also add C to that, so we can open up our discussion under non-public with some more specific questions.
I'm sorry, I don't have those in front of me, so I don't know what C is. I'm sorry.
So C is matters which have discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself.
Sure. Ian, yes.
So I'd like to make a motion into non-public session under RSA 91A32B and C.
Yes.
We need a roll call? Do you want to unmute?
Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jermina?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Martin is not present, so, okay. I have this recorded.
Before we leave, I'd just like to, because I know we still have an audience, Martin Tavishian is a Northampton fire and rescue worker, and he was on call tonight, so there was always the possibility that he might have to drop off. So ultimately, that's what happened, just so anyone viewing knows. Thank you.
I'm not sure if Dave talked to you about how we're gonna do the non-public, since we have so many people in the audience.
No, I didn't. So rather than actually inviting them all in and putting them on hold, what I've done is just invited you guys to a separate Zoom meeting. It'll pop up on your email. So I would ask this group, the panelists, to leave this meeting and join the non-public meeting. Rhonda's gonna keep this meeting open for the attendees, and then we can all just jump back on after non-public.
It's on our SAU email?
Yes, it is. All right.
Yeah, we can.
I'm just gonna hang out with you guys.
I think you're supposed to go to the other one.
Dang it.
And, all right, move over. I had to use the bathroom. We're still recording.
I hope I didn't show our hands.
I have Aaron making an motion to resume the public meeting. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Aaron? For voting?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Jermina?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, that vote's recorded. All right. Yours, Tom.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the nomination of April Levesque for the position of occupational therapist.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Martin?
I'll have to abstain after missing the non-public.
Jermina?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
That vote is recorded.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Tracy Gripenhagen with appreciation and regret.
I'll reluctantly second.
That was Tom and Greg and Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Martin?
I'll have to abstain.
Jermina?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
That vote is recorded.
I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Anna Spalding, continued upon filling her position.
Second.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah.
I'll abstain.
Jermina?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Those votes are recorded.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second!
You beat me.
Is this unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.